Good morning, everyone. I will call this February 11, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Meeting to Order, and we'll start with a salute to the flag. And we have our sheriff here, Sheriff Balaum, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living in justice for all.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. We'll now move to our roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jean Hermann, Vice Chair. Mike Clark.
Present.
Marleus Garcia. Clara Andriola.
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
District Attorney Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galassini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into our public comment.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole, virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available. The speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech, irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others or examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person be removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of public comment are criminal acts as defined under NRS 203.090 and/or NRS 203.119, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Terry Brooks, followed by Maureen McElroy.
It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address politics and employment when it comes to homelessness. Some politicians say the poor do not want to be employed. Others say that the poor lack opportunities to be employed. Some say that programs that help the poor only encourage more poverty, while others say that our society and economy are structured against those in poverty. The poor often provide the wealthy with a surplus of labor when needed, so the wealthy do their best to keep wages low, below what the poor have needed. Technology is taking jobs away from a lot of people. The wealthy own some factories where robots work a lot cheaper than people. Machines and robots can work without needing health care, but when people are working, they really need health care. People need to be paid at least minimum wages and get paid overtime, but robots and machines don't get paid even when they work overtime. So those who say the poor don't want to work blame the poor for their own poverty, but those who say the poor do want to work try to help them rise out of poverty. So they try to provide unemployment benefits for those who are unemployed, while also providing them with training programs to help them to get employed. They not only focus on getting people out of poverty, but they also focus on preventing the causes of such poverty. But those who say it's poor people's own fault that they have been so poor want them to keep providing cheap labor, so they want them to stay poor. But those who say it's not their own fault that they are poor try to give them opportunities so they will no longer be poor. We seem to live in an environment where the rich keep wanting more, and when they get what they want, they get it from the poor. I would like to thank you all for listening to me, and I look forward to coming back instead of having some robot speaking for me.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Maureen McElroy, followed by Drew Rebar.
For the record, my name is Maureen McElroy. I'm a longtime Reno resident and a native Nevadan. I want to take a few minutes of your time to express my appreciation and my support of the Washoe County Library System. As a child, a young adult, and a mom, and now a grandma, its resources have continued to support and enhance my and my family's lives. I know county budget talks are in process. I urge you to maintain the library system's funding. I know one of the county's goals is to support senior citizens, as I am. And on a personal note, our library system did that just for me. One of the databases Washoe County Library System subscribes to is a learning program called Mango Languages. It's extremely expensive if one were to try and subscribe to it themselves. As an individual, I couldn't afford that because I'm on a fixed income. But through my library card, I was able to remotely access that learning program. It allowed me to practice French in preparation for a long-planned trip abroad. So it worked well. Merci beaucoup. The system funding allows it to continue, the library system's funding allows it to continue to provide invaluable, innovative, and free services to citizens like me. So thank you for your continued support, and I urge you, during these budget processes, to fully fund the library system because their programs have been life-changing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drew Rebar, followed by Alana Fitzgerald. And I do have a document to distribute for Mr. Rebar.
Good morning, Drew Rebar, for the record. Last time I was here, we discovered the record doesn't really matter at the library. I do support funding the library, by the way. I think we need a good library. I think we need good people. I think we need good services. I think there is value for our community in the library. What I have found, though, is a lot of waste in the library. Tax dollars being paid for, how does the Ethics Commission define it? Pecuniary interests. So having our librarians getting paid to go to pride parades and pride events, why are we spending tax dollars to pay county employees to go to events that are for pecuniary interests or their own sexual interests? I think that could probably be cut. I think there could be ethics commissions about that. I think there might be. Anyways, I did want to appreciate County Manager Brown calling him out by name. Thank you for opening up the Cares Campus for visits. I appreciate that. At the local cab community, I also want to appreciate the apology that was issued by County Manager Brown to me. Thank you very much again for that. I greatly appreciate that. All that I want is good government without waste that is compliant with our constitutional rights. So like I said, last time I was here, I brought forward the issue of the public librarians altering the public comment, and there was one thing that I did find. The librarians wrote that I did not want drag queen story hour in the library, and I wanted to ban books. I've never said that, and as you all may know, I record things. But unfortunately, on the public record, it was put that I said these things that are not truthful. Exactly the opposite was put on the public record of what I said. I've always said, let the drag queens come and read in the libraries. Just open it to all of the public like the law says. I want to be very clear about that. Also, I've never said ban any books. The only thing I've ever said is adult books should be in the adult section and kids should not have access to pornographic materials. I don't want to ban nothing. Everybody should have a right to their First Amendment rights and their constitutional rights guaranteed in the Nevada Constitution. So anyways, that's really what I'm about. We need to stop this stupid spending, stop this waste of taxpayer money, and use the dollars for what they're supposed to be for, which is everybody in our community as opposed to pecuniary interests. Am I saying that word right? Anyways, I appreciate you guys' time. Thanks for what you do. Have a great day. Drew Rebar for the record.
Alana Fitzgerald, followed by Oscar Williams.
Good morning, Alana Fitzgerald, for the record, and thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I am a constituent in District One and am thankful to my Commissioner for all of the work you do on behalf of our district and the county as a whole, and thank you to all of the Commissioners for your work. Knowing that the budget talks are coming up, I wanted to briefly revisit a topic I covered a couple weeks ago. This, I believe, ties into Washoe County's 2125 strategic plan and speaks to the strategic objective about vulnerable populations and specifically seniors. This example touches also on the goal of service coordination across sectors to improve client outcomes. It was the memory care kits that I had discussed. And just to review a titch, I have a friend who is in early, mid-stages of dementia and was living in a group home for 24-hour oversight and care. Just last week, she was moved to a new, larger facility, more people in the facility. As luck would have it, during my visit with her, I got to tour the facility with my friend and the new activities coordinator for that facility. I shared the information about the memory care kits with that activities director, coordinator, and she was just really excited about it because many of the people living there, issues are not all around just mobility, but around mental capacity. So that's my update, is spreading the word about those wonderful kits through our library system. And I'd like to close by saying that with the growing number of people who are aging and experiencing cognitive decline, I'm guessing that some of you on the board and many of you listening may know someone who could use this set of tools themselves or for people they care for. I understand that across the branches of the library system, there are a variety of these kits, different subjects matter, different subject matter, everything like that. So if you don't find a kit at your local library that you think is appropriate for the individual you love or for yourself, you can request to have it sent to your local library to be able to check it out there. Just wanted to add that as an update, and I would hope that maybe you would consider spreading the good word about these memory care kits as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oscar Williams, followed by Janet Butcher.
I am Oscar Williams. I'm a 30-year resident of Reno. I want to talk a little bit about item 13, Andrew McDonald. I request that you remove it from consent items and allow for some robust discussion to occur on Mr. Brown's recommendation that you permanently hire this person as the official registrar. Citizens filed a complaint last week. Did you guys get the citizen complaint? I'm one of the signees, so I'd like to know that what I'm going to talk about has some relevance. Move forward. I know you can't answer questions. NRS 293387, the canvas of the vote won. People believe that maybe it's facially clear. I'm not sure. Let's walk through it real quick. Clause 2 says, "In making its canvas, the board shall, A, note separately any clerical errors discovered." Now, were any of you told of any clerical errors in the 2024 general? Did Andrew McDonald explain to you that there were like 549 votes that were removed from Sam Brown, and when the public discovered it, he put them back? And that the Secretary of State had issued a press release to explain it was merely a manual cut-and-paste error? That's fine. But did Andrew McDonald disclose the error and how it was corrected to you? That's a good question. You want to hire the guy. Candor is an important issue. Transparency is an important issue. He talks about transparency, but I think he's lacking in some regards. The second part of, Part B of Clause 2, is take account of the changes resulted from the discovery so that the result declared represents the true vote cast. Again, you have to be informed of things to make an informed consent. You wouldn't know what the true vote cast is unless the registrar told you what it was. If he's not candid about the errors, "In making its canvas, the board shall note separately any clerical errors." So again, what do you know? So there was another error. In the first case, the Sam Brown one, the 549 votes were replaced, and so it was corrected. You just weren't informed of it. But there was another one. Mathematical analysis done by Ed Solomon, which said that Brown's, when he did his reformative analysis, Brown's total increased by 21,649 votes. It's a very specific, very clear number. It's a reformative number. You cannot accept the correction in the prior one, 549, and discount the second one, which is 21,649. It's a disparate use of his discretion in that sense. Does that make sense? There were errors. He told you it was an error-free election. He wasn't truthful in that regard. All right? You want to hire this man and go forward, consider that he hasn't been truthful and that there were errors, all right? You have the option to summon in a panel, a petit or grand jury, to do investigative work for you. I encourage you to act.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Janet Butcher, followed by Penny Brock.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. Based upon some of the information that has been found about the library and how they misconstrue what people say, I've been going through the minutes of the county, and although I really admire Jan Galassini and her department, there have been a few of them that I've come across that I go, I think that was a little shortened, and that wasn't quite what I said. But that's neither here nor there. Last week, I was at a cab meeting and got a presentation from Manager Brown about the accomplishments and what have you, and he made a statement that we aren't as in bad a shape as what people are saying that we are. Well, that's not quite what I've heard, and both at the county level and the state level, we're in trouble. We've got some budget issues. So I pulled up a couple of the different counties around the United States that I had audited and looked at a couple years ago. Same size, same growth rate. One of them was $587 million, not over a million, not a million and what is it, $300,000 or $200,000 now that we have here in Washoe County? How are we going to sustain that? Are our taxes going to go up? I have a feeling that they really are. You can sit here and say they're not, but how are you going to pay for all this? I noticed that one of the other things that I kind of took a little bit of a dislike to was the senior center food. I went one time to a senior center for lunch. I'll stay home and fix a peanut butter jelly sandwich. Horrible. And then I'm going to piggyback on what Oscar Williams was talking about, and we still, here we are, how many years later, and our elections are horrible. As far as the library needing money, as long as it is promoting some of the things that it's promoting, people spoke, WC won, they said no. Anyway, Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Steve Letty.
We have a new president, President Donald J. Trump. He's been issuing executive orders. A couple of executive orders he issued have to do with DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. He said DEI is dead. He said it's to be removed from federal, any federal agencies. He also has said that any entity that gets federal funds, meaning grants also, will have their federal funding pulled. That means Washoe County. Now, you had your strategic planning meeting at the end of January after he issued the executive orders about DEI. And yet, in the new strategic plan, you've got DEI throughout it. You had time not to put that in the strategic plan. This is evidence that Donald J. Trump and the department's handling it will have against Washoe County and give them grounds to pull the federal funding, grants, et cetera, from Washoe County. What are you going to do? If that funding is pulled, how are you going to make it up in your budget of 1.2 billion dollars or million dollars? How are you going to make that up? I guess it's billion now. Anyway, Manager Brown was asked about this at our South Valleys cab, and he said, oh, we can't pull DEI because we need it for Title II and Title VI. Those have nothing to do with DEI. So I would like an explanation what Washoe County, the Commissioners, are going to do about DEI. You've got a high-paid DEI manager. That person should be let go. How are you going to pay for her? Are you going to continue with DEI? You could have some lawsuits filed by residents in Washoe County over this. You could have some lawsuits filed by Washoe County employees, telling them they must adhere to DEI policies. That is now against federal law. What are you going to do? Why are you keeping DEI? It's not only in Washoe County, but it was passed in 20, this all came with the new Biden administration in 2021. It was put in our state legislature in 2021. It came into Washoe County in 2021. Our public schools, even our public health depart-
Thank you. Steve Letty, followed by Cliff Nellis.
My name is Steve Letty. This is Agenda Item 10. I am Vice President of the Field Creek Homeowners Association, and I'm going to be brief and forego any further discussion on the wall. But on behalf of Field Creek homeowners and HOE board members in attendance, and those who are unable to attend, I'd like to express our very strong support for the current staff report regarding final resolution of the Arrow Creek Sound Wall. This has been 19 years now, and in Mr. Clark's very well-put words, it's time to stop kicking the can down the road. It only continues to cost the county and taxpayers more money. With that, we would like to express our thanks to the hard work and diligence on the part of Mr. Dwayne Smith, Candy Ramus, the Washoe County Engineering Department, resulting in production of this staff report. We would also like to thank all the Commissioners for allowing us the time to meet and express the concerns of the Field Creek homeowners affected by the failure of the Arrow Creek Sound Wall, the extended history behind it. We feel the staff report is a fair and viable solution to close this matter once and for all, and we look forward to the Commissioners' decision and hopefully moving forward quickly to bring this conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Nellis, followed by Trista Gomez.
Greetings, Commissioners, and Happy Valentine's Day, too. I'm here again because I want you guys to know what's going on. We have a new sheriff in town. His name is Donald Trump. And if you guys have been watching the news on how much corruption he's uncovering, you guys should be shocked. Billions and billions and billions of dollars going to LGBT and kickbacks for the good old Democrat Party. Yeah, like even Zelensky. Oh, what, $177 billion? We got like $75 billion, so that means $100 billion is kickbacks. How much is coming through this county so you can rig our elections like you have in the last 15, 20 years? We know they're rigged. You haven't cleaned up the voter rolls? We don't know. It goes on. There's no transparency inside that machine, that vote counting room. We don't know what that computer's doing inside there. What algorithm is it running on? And then Mr. Williams just brought up a couple other things, and you guys don't even look at it. You know, there have been some crimes committed here, Mr. Aaron Ford and Secretary of State. Yeah, they threatened some of our county Commissioners. I wonder what Mr. Trump's going to think about that. I brought that to his attention. And once we uncover all the waste and fraud here, that's being kicked back here, we know how the organized crime syndicate called the Democrat Party works, and it pays off a lot of Republicans, too. We can get rid of them, too. But yeah, it's going to be exposed, and people are going to be held accountable. So I would like to advise you guys to watch your back. Because if we find out you've been corrupted, then it's jail time, dude. I'm not going to have any sympathy whatsoever, you know? No sympathy whatsoever. It's time to pay the piper. So we're watching, we're looking at you, every little thing you do, every move you make. So we're going to be finding out, thanks to our new president. And the pull on the federal funding on this count is going to be more than $1 million or something. I don't know what Mrs. Brock said, but you know, your whole welfare system is federally funded, too, you know? So yeah, there's a lot of things to think about here. So I advise you guys to kind of walk back that DEI. You know what DEI means? Teaching our kids to hate white people, those people who stole the land from the Indians. And did you know that the Anglos sunk 1,300 slave ships? The Anglos did, or the English. Yeah, we stopped it. We stopped slavery. Thank you.
Trista Gomez, followed by Matt Hanson.
I would like to have my comments put on the record verbatim, please. Every time I come here, I think, wow, what am I going to talk about? But there's so much to talk about every single time I'm here. And today, I just want to go back to the budget because we kind of seem to have this thing where we, okay, we're $100 million over budget for the next four years. Apparently, that's not a big deal, but it seems like a big deal to everybody, you know, who's looking at it, the people who have to pay for all of these things that are going on. And so a couple of things that don't make sense to constituents, right? These are just questions that we have, we ask ourselves. So when we're looking at a difference of a $750 million budget to a $1.2 billion budget, and it's, you know, and I know those were opera funds, I realize that, but all of those things have come, right? All of that capital expenses have come up, and now you've got this employee burden that has come up to this, we don't have those funds anymore. And now you have all of this development, and the property taxes, how you guys get the money for all of these new, all of these programs. And the development is handled, let's just say, poorly, and you don't have enough money for the infrastructure and the development. This is all per your report. And we can feel it, we knew it. So when we got the report, when I was asking for public record, and I got a budget that said that our personnel costs are 65% of the county budget, and now we're looking at, no, they're 80 plus your purse costs. no, they're 80, plus your purse costs. And we don't have enough money for infrastructure, and everybody in the valleys is suffering. You guys, they're suffering. You don't see it? You don't feel it? Just drive the valleys. Just go down during rush hour and drive the valleys. And you'll see that people are suffering. There's fatal accidents, there's accidents weekly. But there's no regard for the residents' concerns or the residents' safety. And the person that we hoped that would vote for us is continuously not, which I hope that, I don't know, I don't even know what to say about that. And then we have this issue of, if I'm a real estate agent and I try to comp a house in Spanish Springs, and I say, you know, I really want more money for that house, so I'm going to comp that house, I'm going to comp it in southwest Reno and maybe Galena. That's how I'm going to get that house to be valued at what I want it to be valued at. It would be illegal. But I'm looking at Manager Brown. I've heard he's a lovely person. I've had, I've heard that he's lovely. But when you take salaries from California and Colorado, and that's how you're getting this person's salary, it wouldn't be legal in literally any other field. And you guys are raising taxes, and you're raising costs, and you're raising employee burden, and it's making residents har-- it's making it harder for residents, and it's making it an undesirable place to live here. That's all I have to say for now. Maybe we need a public comment agenda, just for public comment.
Thank you. Matt Hanson, followed by Pam Dar.
I also am a Field Creek homeowner. I just wanted to submit this into the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Dar?
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners, chair. This is Pam Dar, for the record. I wasn't going to say anything, but then I saw that the wall's back on the agenda. That's a lot of money. I'd like to know, that's a lot of our money, the legalities of using our money and the benefits, because there's got to be a benefit shown. I think they were looking at it the last time it was on the agenda. My concern is the state of our economy and the accountability of spending. I'm looking at my own bills. I mentioned last time I was going to cut back because I just see there's going to be some hard times ahead, there's some changes that are going to happen. You go from one administration beliefs to another, there's a correction course that's going to happen. Three, only three of my bills in one month are costing more than $300 than it did the month before. Most of that's insurance because of the growth here, the accidents. That car insurance has gone through the roof. I had to sit down with my insurance guy and say, okay, let's review this. And that's fine. But health insurance, that's gone crazy, and I do everything to try to take care of myself. But it's gotten, and hopefully they address that because it's getting to where it's not even insurance anymore. And then there was another bill, I can't remember. But I probably should go through all my bills, and everything's going up. The price of gold's going to like close to $3,000 an ounce. That's a good thing because I kind of invested in some when it was like barely nothing. So that's, for me, good, but that's concerning when gold is $3,000 an ounce. Also, before COVID, I heard that you guys were on the verge of laying a lot of people off. But then we got all this COVID money that saved the day. I think this county needs to, and myself, kind of just be careful in what we spend. Things are going to change. It'll probably be some hard times before it gets better. And we'll get through this, but it is a change. You know, and I want to choose where I spend my money. I'm going to hunker down and see how things turn out, you know, and I hope things turn out for the best, people keep their jobs, pay their bills, and have a good life. But I see out in town, the growth has been so fast, it's hard to keep up. I think, I see things not kept as nice as they usually are. So, you know, I hope we get adjusted and things work out really well for everybody. On that note, have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, per our agenda, we will take a break until 11 o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
To look into career training at the CARES Campus through the Reno Sparks Chamber. I would report that staff confirmed that the growth of the Chamber Training Program was explained and that after meeting with Ann Silver, assurances are that they have found suitable space to continue the program. And I spoke with Ms. Silver and she was pleased with how things are going with our group down there. Also, on the 21st, Commissioner Clark requested more information about the VOA vehicle incident. Staff confirmed there was no fatality. The incident occurred off county property, so the only limited information was available from the county. Reno PTE is the investigating agency. Commissioner Clark, at the January 21st meeting, asked about citizen involvement in selecting the next ROV. Staff provided details on how the community participates in the existing ROV recruitment and performance protocols. Also, on the 21st, Commissioner Clark inquired about the county's telework, working from home policy and stance by the county. Commissioner was provided the county's remote work policies, clarifying that they do not fall under state or federal mandates, and there are no plans to make changes at this time. On the January 21st meeting, Commissioner Clark asked about the 343 new employees and the cost breakdown on a website he had seen. Staff clarified that these employees represented both newly approved positions but also refilled positions over the timeframe, which is why the number was so high. Hiring followed established budget and position control policies within our budgeted parameters. And then Commissioner Clark, on the 21st, requested a CARES Campus tour. That tour is scheduled for tomorrow, February 12th. Commissioner Herman requested an insurance presentation following the concerns of the LA fires. A presentation by the Nevada Division of Insurance is planned for March 18th at the BCC, at our meeting, BCC meeting. Ongoing requests on today's agenda, number one, the Golden Valley Recharge, item 12, is on the agenda. The Arrow Creek Wall, item 10, on the agenda. And the new ROV, item 13, on the agenda. Madam Chair, there are no openings for boards and commissions at this time, kind of a rare occurrence. I do also want to report that trainings have been taking place as part of the onboarding of new representatives of our boards and commissions. We've had 53 people attend trainings for the Code of Conduct. There are also training modules, let me back up, a total of 151 board and committee members representing state and local resident groups were assigned to modules for discrimination and harassment, workplace violence, and bullying. About 37% of those folks have actually taken the training and finished the modules. And then there's another group of training modules that will be released in March with regards to ethics and open meeting law and effective meeting management trainings. So, your staff has been very busy. I would also mention that the agenda did not support having a meeting on February 18th, and for that reason, we've decided to cancel the next BCC meeting. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Manager Brown. And I think if you email commissioners responses to their inquiries, and by the way, I love how you just outlined all of those follow-ups, so thank you for doing that. If you don't mind including the full BCC, because it may be information we don't know about, or, you know, things we'd like to learn about, that would be helpful.
Happy to do that.
Thank you. And then, one item I think that was missed is Commissioner Clark asked for the BCC rules to come back to the County Commission, and I had heard from the DA's office it will come February 25th. Is that still the case?
It is.
Okay. So, Commissioner Clark, that item will be coming forward as well. Thank you, Manager Brown. Anything else for us?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just good morning, everybody. I just wanted to acknowledge, we're back to normal BCC time, but we've had a strategic planning meeting, we've had a joint concurrent meeting with a lot of folks up here, and I just wanted to acknowledge folks from our staff and from the Clerk's Office for all their hard work putting together those really complicated meetings, and so I'm glad we're back to normal, so, thank you.
Yes, we are so blessed to have such a great team, and thank you, Madam Clerk, as well. And Commissioner Andriola, no, and Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to salute the county, the Chair, and the County Manager for addressing my concerns. It's been two years that I've been asking a lot of questions, and I like this format. This brings things out in the open. Requests are made, requests are answered. I appreciate that. In particular, though, in the future, when this happens, I'm going to be looking very closely at the answers, and not to call out to anybody at the county, but, you know, I asked specifically a couple of weeks ago, not to anybody here, but about the possibility of radon being in the radon tunnel over the, underneath the Sierra Street in between the two courthouses. And I was given an answer, but it wasn't the answer to the question I asked. The question I asked was, when was the last time the radon tunnel was tested to see if the radon was still present? And I was given all kinds of bobbing and weaving all over the place. At the end of the day, I find out that we haven't tested the radon tunnel since 2019, so, since it's a county facility and I'd asked that question, I'd like to have somebody test it and make sure that everything's acceptable there. We've got county employees, we've got prisoners in that courthouses, we've got citizens in the courthouse, taxpayers. So, just a simple request, I guess they're not very time consuming, I guess you put a device in there and let it detect whether there's radon. So, I'd like to, my question to more formalize it is, can we test that site? And can we get a report about whether it's clean or free of the radon gases? So, again, specific questions are going to be asked, and I hope we'll get specific answers instead of generic answers that may look like they're an answer to you but isn't really the question. So, I'll be keying in on exactly the questions I have, and I'll start off with some questions now. I've asked in the past if the DA can give us a report on the new federal guidelines, the executive orders, each and every one of those, and how it may affect how the county does business with regards of federal grants, federal funds, federal compliance. So, again, we've got a number, and nobody really understands, I don't, I'm not an attorney, I don't understand what all these federal guidelines are, but it's bombarded just about daily, and I'd like to see how it's going to affect the citizens of our county, which are, in fact, citizens of the United States. So, I'd like a report from the attorneys, the county attorneys, about these particular executive orders. So, if we can get those done, you know, at your convenience, I'm not pressed for time, but it'd just be nice to have a good understanding, a working knowledge of what the federal government expects the citizens of the United States and the municipalities of this United States to comply with. So, we'd like to see that done, please.
Madam Chair, can I briefly?
Yes.
We have an attorney assigned to do that, and you're correct that it is in flux and changing almost every day, sometimes by the hour. So, we do have a lawyer assigned and working on that, Commissioner.
Just asking for some updates as they become available.
Gotcha.
No deadline, no timeframe, just, when you know how it may affect us and how we conduct business here at the county, I think it'd be nice to have everybody on the same page with the legal opinion versus personal opinions. Thank you. Next, I just wanted to go on the record, Manager Brown met with us at our Citizens Advisory Board and said that people can take a tour of the CARES Campus. So, if anybody's interested in seeing what the CARES Campus looks like, what your millions of dollars' worth of investment is doing, you can make a request and go take a tour of that facility. Also, I want to talk about some comments that were made at the 83rd session of the Nevada Legislative Session. Chair Hill talked about the reduction of the homeless in our community by approximately 40%. I'm using the word approximately, I don't know if that word was used, but I'd like to see some documentation. I'd like to see what metrics are being used, what, how we're measuring that, just for the record. And, you know, the citizens that I've talked to in the last week or so, nobody with their naked, untrained eye has noticed a 40% reduction in homeless activity around the community. So, I'd like to see how that's justified. I also sent a letter and a request about Washto County allotted $250,000 to Emergency Eviction Prevention Program of Nevada. I know they do good work, I know they've done good work. However, I've had some reports from other citizens that when they try and contact this group, their voicemail box is full, which happens to me all the time, so it's not, that isn't it, but returning calls, and if folks need help in trying to save themselves from being evicted, it's helpful to be able to reach the organization that you're trying to reach out to for help. And then, accounting, this Senior Rescue who I've donated money to, they give an account on a regular basis. I'd like to see the same with all of the agencies and nonprofits that we give money to, some type of an accounting, on a maybe even quarterly basis or semi-annually, something where we get an update here as commissioners on how the funds are being used. So, I'd request that also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have nothing, so, we, oh, Manager Brown, oh, yes, Manager Brown has a special presentation for us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go to the phone. Commissioners, I have the privilege of making a couple of awards this morning to a couple of your fellow commissioners who have reached 10 years with Washto County. So, the first would be Mike Clark. Mike, if you'll come up. I'd like to award you with your certificate and your 10-year pin. There you are, sir.
Thank you.
The second would be for Jeanne Herman.
Thank you for Commissioner Clark and Vice Chair Herman's service to Washto County. And we will wait a minute till they get seated, and we'll move in to item five, Manager Brown, when you have a moment.
Item five is a presentation by George Robeson to briefly outline the purpose of the Truckee River Flood Management Authority, their various functions, and capital improvement plan.
Good morning, everybody. And, do we, yeah, that's great. So, what I'd like to do today, we found out that there was a provision in our inter-local cooperative agreement that we were supposed to annually update you on our capital improvements plan. Apologize, we didn't see that in the last 14 years, but we see it now, and now we're on it. So, that's what this is, and we also, most of you, I've met every one of you, one of them's a very close neighbor of mine, so, most of you know something about this agency, but I just want to review quickly what we're trying to do to give context for what the capital improvements plan that we do is. So, to start off, next slide, the Truckee River Flood Management Authority is a joint effort among Reno Sparks and the county, and we also have numerous other stakeholders, like Story County, Tribes, et cetera, involved with us, the State of Nevada. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to decrease the devastating impacts of flooding along the Truckee River. TERFMA is also building infrastructure and managing floodplain to reduce flood damage, and we're also, we were primarily funded by a tax that was passed by this board right after the flood in 1998, a 1/8 cent sales tax. That tax was also used to build the EOC and the Training Center up by where the Sheriff's Office is. TERFMA was moved out from under the county in 2011 and made an authority under an ICA and under state statute, and that's how we're in our current situation, or how we're governed. There's a several-fold mission, next slide, of what we do. We're trying to improve floodplain planning and management, and we're trying to improve the models and data that we use for that, and we've been doing a lot of work on that accord lately, including updating the flood maps. And FEMA, right now, it's in their ballpark, and they're going to have that probably done next year. We also help first responders during flood events with information about flooding impacts that are specific. And thirdly, the biggest part, is we build flood mitigation infrastructure like below. This is actually over by Walmart, it's the, what we call the risk levees and flood wall there to stop breakouts and flooding in the Meadows area and other areas. Next slide, please. Yeah, this is a big slide for us. Everything in red is what is taken out of the floodplain by what we call our Truckee Meadows Flood Plan, which was used to be called the Local Plan, but it's been modified quite a bit and improved. Everything in red, if that's taken out of the floodplain consistently up to really, really rare events, it can save us on, say, the 1997 flood alone, one flood, over $2 billion. That's what's at stake here. And so, when you look at this, this is the major thing that we're involved in, and we have several studies about the cost benefit. This has a positive cost benefit or above one cost benefit. The cost forward is on the order of three, which is very high. That means that the improvements we do has an economic, a net economic benefit much higher than the cost of doing the improvements. And many projects can't say that, but this one can. Next slide, please. So, our capital improvements involve this Truckee Meadows Project, and then what we call targeted projects, where we are working on a flood-related issue with another agency, such as the county, such as City of Reno, such as the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe. These are targeted projects. The main project, the Truckee Meadows Flood Project, you can see on the screen here, this includes seven projects, one completed, that's the Colonies Levy up there by Walmart, where Walmart is across from the GSR. The GSR Project, the Tomwa Project, which is right across the river, the Airport Berm, the Rock McCarran Project, which we're currently working on design, and we're planning on having a community meeting here in, on March 12th at the McKinley Arts Center, then the Sparks North Levy, as well as Vista Narrows. So, that's our main project, but then we have targeted projects. Next slide, please. This one is called the Riverside Area. This is in Reno, near the Booth Street Bridge, Keystone Bridge, down to Arlington Park. And this is an area where there is, the levee is not quite high enough, and there's a lot of breakouts and flooding, and we're trying to get it up to a certain level to meet requirements of the Army Corps of Engineers. So, we're working closely with the Army Corps of Engineers, the Carson Truckee Watershed Conservancy District, and the City of Reno on this. And we are looking at possibly funding the construction of the facilities that will keep the water out up to a 50-year event in this area. We didn't go larger, because if you go larger, you destroy the whole continuity of that neighborhood. Next slide, please. Another one is we have home elevation projects out by Hidden Valley, and that's been going on since 2014. Next slide, please. So, I think we skipped the Wadsworth Bridge, but that's okay. That is an example of a mitigation project that we're working with the county, as well as the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe, and we're replacing a bridge to make the hydraulics better. So, that's another targeted project and a mitigation project, and we've done other mitigation projects as well, ecosystem restoration projects, et cetera, but that's all dead costs at this point. We have new costs coming in, and that's what a CIP is all about. So, you can see our total CIP components. We have tried to really get this going, because the flooding, you know, won't wait for us. We want to do this before the flood comes, not after. So, in order to construct this whole thing and do these targeted projects that we know about on our books right now, is $192 million. And I'll have a slide about financing in a second. Now, let's look at this and how it vests over a five-year capital improvements plan period. Next slide. So, the cost by year, you can see, this year's $11 million, next year's $28, the next year after that is $68 million, then $62 million, then $23 million. Right now, and I'll, let's go to the next slide, because I'm starting to run out of time. Right now, we have $62 million in our investment account. We have been saving that money strategically so we can minimize our loan or bonding costs. And we have used a great deal of that money recently for a mitigation projects agreement with the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe on the order of $17 million. And we are also doing several designs right now, and we have done considerable work, design work, on Vista Narrows as well with that money, as well as buying property and doing other projects in the past. But right now, we have $62 million, and we currently have approximately $10 million a year that we can use for capital improvements. We have enough money to cover Vista Narrows in the design phase of several projects, and some components of targeted projects, including the full cost of the Riverside Project. Based on the cash flow analysis and scheduling of projects, we will likely run out of funding stream money in the 2027, '28 fiscal year. We are looking at an infrastructure loan program. We recently were deauthorized, we were a core program, and because we were a core program, we did not have access to this loan program. And because now we have access to this loan program, we can get a lower interest loan with lower fees, favorable rates, and basically, we can do all the things that we need to do in our financing. So, that's about $100 million worth of extra financing can be done by that. And it can be covered in a 20- to 30-year payback period. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very succinct. Most people do not follow that 10 minutes, so I greatly appreciate it. And Commissioner Andriola and I have the joy of serving on the Flood Authority Board, and we are really excited about these projects moving forward. If you could just really briefly give us an idea of, so, will be fully finished with the Flood Authority projects that you outlined by 2028, if the financing can work out for us?
The, what we've done is we've compressed it now because of this loan program, and we're deauthorized now, and we have it so we can finish everything and have it completely sealed off and done by 2030.
30.
Yeah. So, that is much faster than what we did, like, say, when we had the Needs Committee. I mean, Jean was aware of the Needs Committee way back when, but that was like 2035. So, we're actually speeding it up now. And our only problem area to slow us down, I believe, is our permitting. And we've been working with the Tribes and with the Fish and Wildlife Service and along with the Corps to really try to get that sped up, and we've had a couple of really great meetings in the last couple of weeks. So, I think we're on our way to get this thing, Vista Narrows permitted, and then that will help us getting permitted for the rest.
Great news. Thank you so much for your hard work on this and for updating the Board. I look to Board members. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola?
Well, I just want to thank you, Mr. Robeson, and the staff. I think that the succinctness of the 10 minutes, plus the Chair giving just a couple of minutes, is really not even indicative of all the hard work that you have all done, and how we're really protecting the community from a flood. I think that that slide with the red, I hope resonates with everyone that either is here or will be watching. The fact that that red essentially is going to go away, if you want to call it that, and really have our community protected is a testament to you and all of the staff and the community as a whole. I also want to give huge kudos to you for the financing piece, because I think sometimes when you have a government agency, and some of the constraints with the Corps of Engineers have put some barriers that I don't think people really understand how you've lifted out of that. So, I personally and professionally want to thank you for protecting the community. I was here when that flood occurred in 98. We don't ever want to see that again. Special thanks, obviously, to the district that I serve, but the community as a whole. Seeing Vista Narrows, looking at that being approved, knowing that we have the financing and won't be incurring a tax burden is another opportunity, I think, to celebrate the hard work that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just say, that's one thing that I've stressed in saving this money ahead, is I didn't want to go, oh, we want another fee, or we want another tax, or we want to grow as an agency, or whatever. We're trying to do this in our existing budget, and we're very focused on the goal, which is the mitigation project.
May I have a follow-up? Madam Chair? This is a great opportunity, since the Board that both Commissioner, the Chair, and I serve on with you, and the staff, to help spread this information, because I know that you know that we, as a Board collectively, have encouraged the community to really understand the hard work that's happening, and how we're really doing everything we can to mitigate a situation that we've experienced, certainly in 98, and some similar floods over the years. So, we're looking forward to that tour of information. What a great opportunity to kind of roll it out a bit, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we have great, are they, are our videos on our website yet?
No, we're actually going to debut them at that meeting.
Oh, great, on the 12th.
At the McKinley Arts Center, yeah.
Okay. And hopefully, they'll be on the website so folks can see the great work that you and the team are doing.
Oh, yeah, and on social media.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Robeson, for a great presentation. We've got some 35, 40 people in chambers here today, but this is information that all the county needs to, all the county residents and citizens and taxpayers and voters need to see. I hope the county helps push this particular presentation out to as many people as possible. I hope your organization does it as well. This was a great presentation in a short amount of time with a lot of materials covered, but I think the public needs to really understand the good work you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and we'll see you at the next Flood Board meeting. Manager Brown will now move into item six.
Item six is a presentation by Dr. Chad Kingsley, who is the District Health Officer to give an overview of the Northern Nevada Public Health.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Happy to be here this morning.
Happy to be here this morning. As part of my, I am now in my position about 10 months. So as part of that, in reviewing over the health district, want to kind of give a, come and give the pulse of the health district, as well as provide increased communication and, and really a point. So I'm also, as we are jurisdictional partners, and really, in 1958 was one of the first inter-local agreements that really regionalized public health. I know we recently had some with fire, had some comments and discussion about regionalization of fire. This is something that has been done before, you know, and it's a great example, as well as our EMS system. But really a point here to give you a snapshot. I mean, if I can come maybe twice a year, just kind of give an update, but also receive information from you, or anywhere you want us to focus on at the time that we can improve, so that we increase our accountability to you and your constituents, and that we are also resilient and being able to respond to those things that public health do for the community and increase our collaboration. So really, my priorities here for you, as I work with you, as well as Reno and Spark City Councils, to be able to provide that, what public health is for our community. So again, we are in our local agreement and touching on that. So, you know, it's through the years that we've now, going over 60 years with this inter-local agreement, that we've provided these services. And public health is really a two-sided coin. The other side is, is public safety, correct? With our law enforcement and our fire and how we work together. And even with the flood district, if a flood was to occur, we have to issue safe drinking orders, we have to follow up. So public health is always ingrained as part of these partners, so. So I just want to give a quick overview. What is the, the District Board of Health? So there's my office, the office of the District Health Officer. And so I have the county official for those things in our statutes, and which needs to be issued. We also do a three-year process, which is a community health assessment. We involve workshops with the community, all our partners. We go out and gather that information, and then our community helps us identify where are the gaps that we're missing in our community? What are we lacking? Where can we try to improve? And so from that, then we do a, a community health improvement plan, where we focus over the next three years. And we do this in conjunction with Renown, so that they also have to do a CHOP every three years, too, so that we're meeting and actually identifying where do we need to work out in our community. And we're just starting the next cycle of that. We also participate in a five-year process of a public health accreditation board, so that we know we're meeting standards for our community that are recognized. Workforce development, community outreach, communications, and then government affairs with that overall in my office. Another is administrative health services, that's our budget, fiscal compliance, technology, facilities, and HR. We take fiscal compliance very seriously. We, we like to maintain ourselves in very low risk and do want to say that our fiscal compliance, our officers are doing amazing jobs. When we get into the other, other divisions is where a lot of our mandated services come in, that we're required to do for our community. And these mandated, we have, we also have essential services that many times are gap services within the community. We always look at our community health partners, how they're out there. What are they doing? And if they're delivering these services in our communities, I mean, can we back off? But in many instances, we're the, we're the last stop, where, you know, where the certain needs in the community are not being met. So we always try to identify those gaps so that any in our community can receive those access to care, or information, or help, and where they're at in their health and their, and their life. But reviewing over, so any given day, I can change my hat, anytime what I'm talking about, sometimes several times a day. When we look at epidemiology, so epidemiology, we have about 80-some communicable diseases that are mandated to be reported by our healthcare partners. And so we have a very, in a process for that. A case is opened up, it has to be reviewed, inspected, and has to be closed within 24 hours. But all those, any of those in, from flu, RSV, any of those, we monitor out there. We monitor the hospitalizations going up, because we have to monitor, report, investigate, intervene, and educate on those points. So not only do we close the case, we also expect to go out in the community and try to make an impact on that so it doesn't spread. And as part of that, we also have EMS, and so I mentioned that. So we have REMSA, which is, again, a regionalized system for emergency medical services, our ambulances. Different from fire, though they're always put together in many points. But we help to coordinate and are the authority over that, the Board of Health for EMS. So we have that regionalized method that we have put one system in place that we administer through REMSA. And so then, as well as emergency preparedness. So we prepare for, this year, we are focused on earthquakes, so coming up to be able to address if an earthquake happens and planning for that. Preparedness and vital records are all there. Most of these are mandated or essential services. Next is, is environmental health, so inspections. It's just not going out to restaurants, it's all permitting new restaurants. We're also very much involved in construction, hotels as pools. In the last 10 years, for the last three years, we've gone up 100% in number of pool, new pools being built. So it's something new for our community that we've seen, that we're addressing. Vector, such as mosquitoes, rabies, those things out there, we also monitor and have to approach and have, or mandated points over those that we have to, that waters and for our septic system, residential, solid waste, and as well as with developing these regulations. And just for our regulations, anything that we have developed regulations on, the public can seek a variance towards. They have to go approach the public health, and they can seek a variance. If the state regulates it, then they have to go to the state for that variance. But always want to be able to approach any of our businesses or community members that feel they may need a variance. We're very open to them to come and express those variances, what they're seeking for, to the Board of Health. Next is immunizations, sexual health, chronic disease, women, infants, children, and then community health workers. Excited to see progress in our community health workers, which is an amazing program that really is kind of a peer support, but also integrates within our medical care and care system that to really address any of the individual needs, as well as group needs of, of our community. And then we have air quality, which is our monitoring. Again, they're also part of that building process that they, anytime a building's being torn down for asbestos, or also our clean airs. And this is a really great example, that this started about 20 years ago, and the Board 20 years ago made some decisions about our inversions and our air quality here. And we've seen an improvement. It takes 20 years, but we've seen that improvement within our community and how we respond, as well as inspection regulations. But overall, so a lot we have mandated, as is true, all our mandates are unfunded, so, but it's always a challenge, but we, we seek to meet those. So a lot of amazing staff, but prevention is a big thing. So public health sometimes is kind of forgotten about, like, what do they do? I don't understand the breadth of it, all that we do. So we do operate from a federal, state, and county level, but it comes to prevention. And we say, we never get thanked for the mosquito bite, that never happens. Or if you go out to eat and you don't get sick, we don't think that, that's part of what we require and we want, a standard in our community. Or when something is being built, that the minute it opens, it's to a standard that prevents harm, or, or, you know, can sustain itself. And while we work with our builders, the minute they are done, we inherit those projects for the life. If it's 70 years that they're open, we inspect them once or twice a year and work with them as partners. So we do a lot with our economic stability, as well as growth and longevity for, for, for our, our population. So I just want to give a governance overview. So how do we manage all this? We set strategic priorities. And right now, we have healthy lives, healthy environment, local culture of health, impactful partnerships, organizational capacity and financial stability. So we set those strategic priorities. This is just an example. So healthy environment, so we do a management, process management system. Are we doing it correctly? We set our goals. So district goals, protect people from negative environmental impacts. We set objectives with those. And then we have quarterly, staff-wise, we have monthly, and we register it. So right now with this, we have 18 on target, one off target, three critical, and two deferred. And so we're, we're tracking that. Where are we at? How well are we doing? Where do we need to prove? What's our individual trends? So that's how we manage our staff and what our goals are on a daily basis. Recent interventions is environmental health. So it's been discussed a lot few years. I'm happy to report that we've seen, through community engagement and collaboration, we're getting reports back that they're seeing increased turnaround times, increased communication, and effective, effective approaches to how do we address the problems, not only through us, but also all our partners. And those are ongoing, and happy to say that it's, it's bringing a great response. And I want to shout out to our community partners for their grace and their patience as we do this and permitting. We started a new process starting January 1 on those points and everything. And then emerging medical services, we're ongoing REMSA discussion improvements that we're working towards. So these are recent interventions since I've come in, that we've been working on diligently for our community. Organizational impacts, so this is also, surely we're working to get this where anyone can go to our website and see where this is at. This is, each of these bars is a three-year trend. So overall, we're 202 employees. Right now, you see that our, our position vacancy is usually 5%. It's now at 12%. It's probably, it's going to go up. And I'll speak about it just a little bit with our budget, but we have initiated a 10% cut with our 10% cut through attrition, so over the next year, so we can meet our budgetary challenges. And we've already met a lot this year. We're already starting to see savings. So any position that comes open, we say, is this needed? Is this something that we can pause? How do we redistribute and take that so that we can more positively and conservatively impact our budget? But overall, our revenues right now are 34 million, and our expenditures are 36. So we're looking to address that and helping to lower that. But again, we go through. So clients is directly served, last year in 24, 11,000. Diseases, cases investigated, over 6,000. And of those cases, 93.5% of them, we did within those 24 hours, that we were able to open and close and continue that investigation. Inspections completed, we did see a decrease on some of them, about 8,000 last year. Plan and building has gone up. So that's a good point for our community, that we've seen the increase in number of new businesses, as well as permitting, permitting restaurants. So it went up from 2,000, smaller numbers, up 2,900 to 3,400 last year, so. And then permits, about, everything kind of still, is holding steady here, about 16,000. Vital records, we issued 52,000. And then public, public records requests were about 5,000. Then, this is just our interaction with the community. What are we doing? Social media posts, social media fires. And we've tracked those numbers for, and we've seen a steady increase over that as we're diligently trying to communicate our message and our responsibilities to the community. Fiscal health, so this is a shot of our budget. It looks like a butterfly. One side is just clinical health, clinical and community health. And so we can have one staff sometimes on seven different grants. And sometimes they're, they're, when they do their time cards on, on a weekly, on the two-weekly basis, they're spending over an hour because they, I spent two hours on this grant and two hours on this. We have a very complicated budget. But it's also the nature of what we do in, in grants. So revenue, so 50% is intergovernmental, and that means grants. So of recent discussions, we've seen in the, in the news of certain grants being paused, it does highly affect us. So the state has no public health funding. Everything they have, they administer, comes from the federal government. So if anything stops at the state, the Department of Public and Behavioral Health eventually trickles down to us, that means we stop. They did for the, historically, for the first time, the governor did put in his, into his budget, public health funding, that was SB 118 previously. He did put it in again, so we're thankful. So right now, it does help us. It's just a challenge with that, is that right now, we're doing it on a program and basis. If we hire an employee with that money, then we have a fiscal cliff. So it is a challenge with us, but we are grateful for that funding and that recognition from the state. But charges for services and licenses and permits, and then our county transfer, which is 9,500,000. And then our expenditures, same thing, but over about 60% is benefits and salaries, and the rest is capital, which will come off as the TB clinic that we just broke ground on recently. And then our other services from what we meet in the community, as well as our overhead, so. So looking at, this is where our staff is, is deployed. Looking at this, to balance it, making some organizational charges so that we can reduce a little bit on CCHS and increase EPHP, but really balancing out for the next five, 10 years, and how do we properly grow and correctly grow? But looking at the staff members, so we've seen that increase, but with our approach this year with our 10% increase, we are going to see a decrease. Fiscal projections, same as you guys, we're not looking super great. We have a lot of assumptions. State funding continues through 2030 right now, 2030, '29, with the new budget cycles being approved, but in a flat federal funding. Generally, federal uncertainty, we're all in the same boat. Local budget shortfalls, we're all facing that. Our grants are flat, TB funding like that, but we're still seeing progress, right? But where are we at? Since 2016, we've been 9.5 million. We've been a flat budget. Based on COLA, as well as corn fairy, as well as inflation, the difference there between 12 million and 9 million is we're, we're working towards that and graciously with, with the county and looking how to address that. But at the same time, just, we're all facing those challenges, we understand that. So we're grateful for the discussions that are occurring. This is similar from all of us, we're looking at that. Nice thing I can say is that when this first came out, the 2005 to 2006 was steeper, and just by the interventions we've done this year, we've, we've slowed that. So just slowing that curve down and working with our partners and making sure we can do internally. The, so what are we doing? So reduce staff by 10%. So each department has that goal. I would say we're already at 5% for each department. We've reducing operating costs and reduced intermittent hourly staffing. We're performing divisional assessments, and we have grants for that to go in and say, where is our efficiency at, and where can we cut back on? And reducing essential services before mandated services. So what does our current reduction means? So in order to meet permitting this year, we've had to discontinue mosquito surveillance. So I just let you know. So it is, it's, for the next few years, we will have the data, knowing where previous mosquitoes were at. We still have a grant to fly the helicopter and to administer those to the community, but we don't no longer have the staff capacity to be able to go out and do testing for mosquitoes. And that's an example of when we have to pull back on staff. But at the same time, I'm just not going to let it go. We're seeking where in the community can we have volunteers go out and set up our traps? And can the community help? So we can still possibly collect that, that, that data for us. For epidemiology, we're about one, per 100,000 of our population, we should be at 1.8. So we are able to meet and track the diseases within our community, but we do not have a strong capacity for singular events. So for example, if bird flu, which was recently, we made national news yesterday, and this was in the Fallon region, but it is very close to us. And Central Nevada Health District could do an amazing job. But if we had a larger outbreak on that, we would, on some staff, have to come to decide, are we going to be able to focus on these diseases or this disease? So, but we will respond, and that's our job, and we're resilient. We're going to lean production, so no overtime is available for that, for helping to cut our budget. But we are going to lean production with our staffing and staffing methods to be able to meet those needs in our community. Again, we still respond, we're just trying to be as fiscally conservative as we can. And CCHS has already changed. And then when I did this, and we'd got the notice that any lead surveillance had to stop immediately. That has since changed, so as a day-by-day basis, what we get from the federal government changes. So it's a challenge, but we will respond appropriately. So outcomes, you know, overall, we can see reduces, just understanding that any reduction increases service time and what we can respond to. What keeps me up at night is just those singular events that, will we always be able to respond? Right now, yes, we're in a good spot. We have amazing staff, and I feel that we're able to meet those needs with the community and find improvements where needed. And it's not a, I don't want to be a doom and gloom here at all, we are positive, and staff is doing an amazing job. And we're grateful for the partnership that we have with the county, so. I went over my time, I did not make it on that. That was my goal, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well, when you come back and give us regular updates, you'll, you'll make that 10 minutes.
I'll get there, I will get to that 10 minutes, yes.
Yes, thank you. That was a lot of information.
It was.
And I know that through budget discussions, there's a lot of back and forth with the county to see how we can continue to support all the great work that Northern Nevada Public Health does. So thank you for your advocacy. And I personally want to say thank you for responding to me so quickly with constituent concerns and questions, and providing folks pathways to get where they need to go. So I just want to say personally, thank you, because I really appreciate knowing how these things work, because I don't have the pleasure of being on your board, but also being able to respond to our constituents and making sure that they understand that we care about them and want to see them be successful in whatever route they want to take with Northern Nevada Public Health. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I will go to the board. So Vice Chair Herman. Oh, okay. And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo your sentiment. I was going to bring that up today, just your responsiveness to constituents. It's, it's really difficult to kind of navigate and maneuver some of these policies and practices that we have. So your communication, not only at the constituent level, but with other organizations, is, is really to be applauded. And, you know, my colleague over here might be struggling with the little sickness or sore throat, but I think that the important thing about NMPH is that you remind us that it's not just about individual health that matters, it's the entire population. And I really applaud and excited about the areas that you're able to meet those gaps, particularly because you're allocating those resources where they're often not had. And so I just wanted to commend you on all your work. Congratulations on your 10 months. We had 10-year anniversaries up here, but we'll get you your plaque when you got your 10-year.
Thank you. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. Dr. Kinsley, thank you for all you do and the staff. And I have big shoes to fill in filling the board position that Commissioner Garcia sat on, now sitting on the board. And really understanding, I think that the message of what you do and how we've grown and your budget essentially has been flat since 2016. And the fact that you clearly, and much of this presentation was during the strategic plan, have a plan in terms of what can be done as we all are tightening our belts and looking at essential services. I think it's a message that entire county needs to think about, or what are those essential services? And if they're not essential, are we really needing to do them? And the fact that you're representing public health, with all due respect, is almost, to be honest with you, everything that I've learned in the short period of time in sitting on the board is essential. It has an impact to our community, whether it is the point of view, sharing that if you're going to eat and you're not sick, it's a contributing factor is the inspection piece, or whatever it might be. I do also want to echo the sentiment about the response in terms of responding to constituents and really looking at what you can do to give fact-based information and to prevent misinformation from maybe taking a hold, which sometimes that happens. But I also want to share that, you know, leveraging the volunteer group, when we heard about the mosquito abatement and the setting traps and those things that are going to have to be really dialed back, I think there's an opportunity to look at maybe, and maybe you already are, just thought of it now, is leveraging volunteer groups that are already in place. We have two distinguished members of the CERT team, Francine and Terry Doncic here, who are trained professionals in terms of what they do with CERT. There are many other organizations that maybe can be leveraged to help because that is a public service. Mosquito abatement, we all know, before, it wasn't that long ago, we didn't even know about this Nile and some of the things that are happening through the transfer of mosquitoes, malaria, that we hope we never see. But the point is, is that that might be something to think about. I also want to give a huge shout out to you and your staff because I had the pleasure of actually meeting with groups, the food industry, bar industry, because they had some concerns in how things were happening and looking at ways to improve. The responses that have already been implemented from that meeting really is a testament to your leadership of actually looking at what can be done and how we can be really in the customer service business. I say that all the time. That's what we're in. We're in the customer service business. Our constituents and our community expect essential services, and public health is at the top of the list, along with many others. I want to commend you also again for meeting with the construction industry as well. I attended that meeting and look forward to seeing what those opportunities are to help avoid duplicative efforts that may be allowing more efficiency to be put into place, which is really a testament again to time and money. So having said that, I do have a question that I'd like to pose, and being that we have folks here and then this would be public, is to talk about the TB clinic, if you would. And there have been constituents, and I spoke with you about that, because I've had folks reach out and say, why are we spending all of this money on the TB clinic when we don't have TB and what we would historically consider TB? So I wonder if you, Madam Chair, if you would, if you could just address the importance of why that clinic is being stood up, that much of the money is coming from outside sources so it's not on the back of taxpayers, but also the operational piece? And then what that means to our community health-wise? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea, and to address those questions. So looking at tuberculosis, and it's fascinating. It's one of those, if you ever watched Old Westerns or those parts, it was called consumption back in the day. And really, it's in part of Nevada Constitution. It's in Arizona, it's a lot of the West, you know, when they did their constitutions, TB was one of the first things put in. So it's something that, that and rabies, old yeller, but we won't bring that one up. But, and speaking of that, so it's something that's always been here, and it didn't go away. Since planes, trains, and automobiles were invented, we've seen us traveling across the world, and we tend to bring back diseases with us that perhaps we've thought we eradicated. But it's always a need there. And it also goes into the pathology, what is tuberculosis? So one, on the logistical side, the reason we needed a new building is we're currently housed in the old medical examiner's. If you've seen it downtown, it's a very aged building, and the county is currently in the process of selling that building. So we needed a new home. But also, we only have one room there, so it's called negative pressure. So if somebody goes into that room, the air doesn't circulate. So it naturally filters the air out. So anybody in that room wouldn't get further contaminated. And we only have one operating room in there currently, I don't know how it is. So we needed a new building. ARPA provided us the opportunity to do that. And so this will be our first new building we've built in over, since, I believe, the 80s, since the current building that we are in to be able to manage that. And so the funds were available. We saw that community need, and then so we developed that with as least financial impact as possible. Now, when it goes into tuberculosis, and again, it's one of those diseases, if you don't know about it, I think we're doing our job. But how it goes into it, so somebody can be exposed to tuberculosis, and then you can carry it for 40 years. It goes dormant. And a lot of times where we see it is somebody has immunological response or especially burns, if somebody's severely burned, TB activates instantly like that, you know? So then not only are you trying to recover from burns, you also have a compounding infection on top of it, tuberculosis. And so while we have active cases, and currently right now, Kansas City has had a major outbreak of active, they've had over 40 to 50, I believe, of active tuberculosis cases. And the impact to that community financially is a challenge because of treating those. So it's also a very slow treatment. So you have active. On average, we have five to seven cases, seems pretty small, but we have latent. And so that's when you go and get a skin test, you have a reaction, then you know you have it in you. So we don't want it to be latent, late in your life. Diabetes too. If you have diabetes and it progresses, your tuberculosis can activate, and you can have that within you for the decades. So then what do we do? Okay, we want to treat it so it's no longer dormant in that. And it takes six to nine months. And then we have to administer that medication on a daily basis. And then so, and then the completion of that, then we can say, okay, that person is no longer tuberculosis latent. There's no symptoms, it's not contagious when somebody's latent, only active is, but it's a very small percent of population. So what public health does, we go out, we screen the populace, we see the skin test, we identify those people that have been exposed to it, and it's dormant in their bodies, and then we treat them. And that's a lot of our work. I also, we also see it in our unhoused population, and kudos to our nurses. They do everything they can, and they are there with them. We can also, we've set it up where people don't have to come in, they can, we have to observe them taking the medication by mandate. And so then we have to see them doing it. People do it on their phone, they do it by daily basis. So tuberculosis is very much still part of us, but because of public health, we've managed it very well here in our, in our, in our community. Now, just in the last two years, Clark County had an exposure that resulted in school-aged children, that was over 300 to 400 that were exposed. And then when I was in Mojave County, same thing occurred. I had over 600 children exposed to tuberculosis that we had too. Not only, we have to pay for the X-ray, we have to pay for the skin test, when that is, that's part of public health, we're mandated to do that. And so it's a very large process, perhaps a lot of our constituents don't understand, but it's something that if we let go of, then we could possibly have a worse outcome. So that's our job, to be that shield, that guard to it. Overall, and our tuberculosis staff is doing an amazing job of that. Our numbers are low. We are able to respond. I do have concerns. So we recently were receiving the medication. It was $2 a pill for each pill that's administered over six to nine months. It was coming from the national stockpile. We no longer able to receive that, and there's shortages coming. Right now, it was, we got nervous, we were, somebody told us $100 a pill, and we were able to get around that, and it was like, that can't be possible. Last we heard it was $4 a pill, but I think it just went up to six. So that more than doubles our budget, is a challenge to be able to administer that medication to our public. So again, it impacts us, and again, we're not the only health district that's dealing with this, and we'll take that to our federal representatives, that they need to hear that and understand that all communities are going to be impacted by that, just a $2 increase to the pills to tuberculosis. But overall, that's why we want to present, we want to prevent what's occurring in Kansas City right now. So we stay on top of it and are diligent over that, and just, that's the reason. Very long answer, but I want to make sure I hit all those points that you asked, so.
No, I think, would you just share what the annual numbers on the latent? I didn't hear that, so I think that's important.
Last year, we had seven cases, and I believe we had, I'm going to have to do an approximate here. It was 870 or so latent cases, I wanted to say, so.
So I think it's important to share that information. So thank you so much, and again, thank you for being so fiscally responsible, customer service responsible, and mission-driven as being an essential service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Dr. Kinsley, for your presentation. I think it's, people always think about first responders and public safety and probably don't think of your department, but if you look at the work that you do, you're every bit as important as any other first responder with quality of water and food and air and every other aspect of the work that you do. So thank you for the good work you're doing. I've asked time and time again about us getting that, the old medical examiner's building closed and off the books and send that money back your way for what you need at your new facility. So I'd like to ask the county when we can expect to close escrow on that particular piece of property that we have, and hopefully sooner than later, and get that, get that cash flow back to your organization. But thank you again for the good work you're doing. And, you know, not every single department impacts every single citizen in the county, but I think yours truly does. I mean, whether you live here, whether you're passing through our county, whatever you're doing, if you're buying food, you're eating in a restaurant, whatever you're doing, drinking water, somehow or another, you're, the dots are connected back to your organization. So thank you for the good work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you soon.
Great, thank you very much.
Keep up the great work. Okay, Manager Brown, we will now move into item seven.
Item seven is a presentation and update on FY '25 second quarter status report for the Washoe County Regional Detention Facility to include security of the jail, conditions of confinement, staffing, and medical care of inmates housed at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, and an update on the camping ordinance, including but not limited to enforcement outcomes, efforts to defer enforcement, and resource levels.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, Captain Andy Venn, Washoe County Sheriff's Office Detention Operations Captain. We had the request last week on the update on the ordinance. I had a presentation prepared for fiscal year '24, the summary of statistics, and a lot of different slides talking about the makeup of the jail, who's there, why they're there. With respect to your agenda and the time of the audience, if we, I think this topic of the ordinance is very important, and I'm glad that you asked for the information today. If that goes long, I'm more than willing to put my other presentation aside and hold it for next time. Those stats aren't going anywhere, they're still going to be here next time, and I don't want to have the board pressured to rush through a very important topic.
Thank you. And I guess I would ask the board if there's any questions on that update. They can ask that at the end if that's necessary as well.
Yes, Madam Chair. And you have the full packet of the intensive statistics. I was referring more to the update on the fiscal year '24 summary.
Oh, the final, yes. Okay. Well, let's see where we get with hearing from the HOPE team, and thank you so much for giving them time to talk about the great program.
Before I introduce the sergeant who's currently in charge of the HOPE unit, I think any discussion on this ordinance, we'd be remiss not to recognize when the sheriff and the board came together and decided to start the HOPE team and really be aggressive of going out and helping our unhoused population. One person stepped forward and founded that team, that was then Sergeant Shatana Daniel, who you've all met, who's presented before. She began the journey of getting this ordinance passed and was very instrumental in its passing and the way that the ordinance would be used. And I think that the message she gave forth to the board and to the public was, we understand that we're asking for a new law. We were asking for the trust of the public and the board that we would use that ordinance for the spirit in which it was intended, and that is to get the resources to those that were most in need of it in our community. And I think with the presentation of our new sergeant, you'll see that that is in fact the case. But we're both humbled and honored that you gave us that opportunity to take that ordinance and use it for the good of the public. So with that, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Natasha Shute, who took over for Sergeant Daniel when Sergeant Daniel promoted to Lieutenant.
Thank you, Captain. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Natasha Shute, and I am the sergeant for the Washoe County Sheriff's Office HOPE team. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm happy to provide an update on the Washoe County camping ordinance to you all. I'd like to start with some stats for 2024. The HOPE team was able to make 2,182 contacts, and of those contacts, 1,404 received or were connected with services. We were able to house 144 individuals in the field and also contacts made at community court. We were able to complete 65 diversions. And just a side note for diversions, those are at the individual's request of voluntary transport to a safe place. So we will take them to CARES Campus, Our Place, Capitol Hill, the HOPE Clinic, wherever they would request us to take them. We were able to assist our patrol and civil department, 193. And as you know, our civil department is responsible for evictions, and so we respond to their scene and offer resources, I mean, any type of housing, resources that they may need on scene. So we're happy to do that. We had two arrests, but they were not associated with the Washoe County, the camping ordinance, excuse me. And for the year 15 citations, warning only were provided. At the next slide, oh, thank you. At the end of October and into the first part of November, the HOPE team completed a cleanup of the End of World. The HOPE team provided outreach for several months prior to the cleanup. A 72-hour notice was given to each individual and throughout the encampment prior to the cleanup, and the HOPE team responded each day for 72 hours after the notice was posted to provide additional resources and continue to make contact with the people living in the encampment. At the end of the cleanup, we were able to provide housing to four individuals. 15 warning citations were issued to individuals who still remained in the encampment after the 72-hour notice was posted. And for some stats, Washoe County Roads assisted us. They provided three dump trucks, one front loader, a crew of seven men, and they removed 144 tons of rubbish and debris from the End of World. Our Washoe County Sheriff's Office inmate work crew also removed seven loads utilizing their 14-yard trailer of debris and rubbish from the End of World. So this is just a before and after photo. Washoe County Roads also constructed no camping signs, and I am currently working with the 811, the underground call before you dig, to make sure that they are placed in accordance with the ordinance for the verbiage, but also to protect the utilities that are out in that area and the citizens. So we're still working on that. Thank you. This is our investigation process for the camping ordinance. The first contact out in the field, we give a verbal warning and get them connected to case management. Our second contact is a warning citation, and we continue with case management, but I would like to just say, between steps one and two, there are multiple contacts. If someone is able to work with us and utilize any resource, then we continue to meet with them prior to the second step to see if we can find a solution or a housing placement for them prior to even giving them the warning citation. So our third contact is a formal citation, and fourth is a last and final resort. An arrest can be made to facilitate continued service. resort. An arrest can be made to facilitate continued services through our Detention Services Unit at the jail. So if an arrest is made, then we get in contact with the Detention Services deputies, and they'll go downstairs. We coordinate our case management and their needs while they're in the facility. And if they are released prior to that, then we will contact them and see if we can offer some more resources. And then just some updates. We are currently working with our local court administrations to be able to cite directly into Community Court. We're working on some mutual administrative orders for the jurisdictions. As of January 2025, Hope deputies have completed eight warning citations. On January 10th, a homeless camp did catch fire along the north side of I-80. So it's on the north side of End of World. I did contact fire, and they were not, they did put it out, and not pressing charges. The Hope Team is currently working on cleanup efforts in that area. We're working with outside entities and the inmate work crew, but due to accessing where they were located, there's some safety concerns to try to clean that up. So you can only drive in so far, and then you have to hike in. So it's a little bit difficult to get to, so we're going to overcome those and get that cleaned up. And we still have two case managers and a SOAR deputy down at Community Court every Wednesday. And for anyone who doesn't know what the SOAR is, it's SSI, SSDI Outreach Access and Recovery, to help individuals who are homeless or at risk of homelessness to apply for social security benefits. So that's been very beneficial for us down at Community Court. And that's my presentation. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you. And we'll see, do you have anything to highlight for us on the jail statistics before I open it up to the board on both items, Captain?
Madam Chair, not on the current quarter. We're running, our ADP is up to about 1,100, 1,160 as of this morning. So we're a little bit up from last year. Our leverage length this day is 3% more from fiscal year '23 to '24, something we're working on. I have some comments and some thoughts on that. I've worked into my presentation. So I'd rather save that for the full presentation and give a time to this topic if you have anything.
Okay.
Unless you have any question, or the Commissioners have any direct questions about the jail last few months.
Okay, great. I will open it up to the board to see if there's comments or questions on either portion of the presentation. And Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Okay, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you so much. Can you spell your last name for me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you so much. I'm not going to try to say it, but coming from somebody who has a hard first name, I'll just say hello. Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm looking at your stats page from 2024, and I saw that it looks like a 64%, 64% of the contacts you made, folks were connected to resources, which is impressive, given the population that we're serving and 144 individuals housed, which is unbelievably hard to move from somebody who is in that situation to having a roof over their head. So I wanted to commend you for that hard work. And it's based on relationships, I imagine, long, lots and lots of touchpoints and relationships and trust that's built over time. So the citations, or sorry, the arrests, that bullet point, second to last bullet point, can you talk about, it said not associated with the ordinance, can you explain what those two arrests were? We get a lot of questions from our constituents saying, like, are you arresting everybody for sleeping, you know, here and there? And I just wanted to give you a chance to kind of explain what those situations were.
Absolutely. Those two arrests, one was for trespassing on the private property per the owner's request, and the second was for possession of stolen property.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd be remiss to not recognize Sergeant Daniel as well, that I walked End of the World a few times with her and the other staff, and I look forward to maybe having that opportunity with you as well. It is in my district. It certainly is interesting that we call it the End of the World. I don't know where that came from, but it's not the End of the World, but it is clearly noticeable in terms of where it's been to where it's at now. And Commissioner Garcia really hit on the point that I wanted to thank you and recognize it is about relationships. The three times that I've been out there and seeing the relationships in terms of really giving folks options and not just what would be considered traditional law enforcement approach. And I'm not trying to say that that isn't important. You all are trained professionals, and those times are needed. But the reality is, is that it is a success to the stats. It's a success to really looking at pulling people out of the situation and giving them the resources to go on with a productive life. And those are about choices as well, right? It's about choices. And so I really want to commend you. I look forward to maybe going out there and strolling through it and not seeing some of the devastation. As you may be aware, there are recognized petroglyphs out there. It's a really preserved area that I have continued to work on, and I have to, I'd be remiss to not include Bryant Befort at Washoe County, Sustainability Manager. He and I are working, we've had a very successful meeting with Reno Sparks Indian Colony to look at that. But the fact is, it wouldn't have been possible to even have that really positive discussion without you, without really looking at the cleanup and with the ability to help ensure that not only we preserve the river, but we preserve a culture that is important. So kudos to all of you for doing all of the hard work. And I think to Commissioner Garcia's question, I was going to ask what the arrests were for. And I'm just wondering, I know this is the 2024 stats, but I look forward to seeing what this trend looks like. And maybe there's an opportunity to look at, and I don't know if you track this, but employment, if there's the ability to look at, because obviously, that's probably long-term, and I'm not trying to add and burden you with additional responsibility. But if, I know that on the case management side, that there is a tracking that occurs, and I think that would be helpful in terms of that. And maybe when the opportunity presents itself, really talking and highlighting some of the success stories, I think would be welcome. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I've always support the efforts of the sheriff, so thank you for the good work you're doing. I've got a few questions. I'm looking at a report from the city of Reno, and I just want to compare and contrast city of Reno for 2024, and in particular on this, in their outreach program that they have, they had, they made 2,658 interactions with folks on the streets. And out of that group, 64% of those folks declined any kind of service. Can you kind of give us an idea of if you're seeing the similar trends, or what are your thoughts, and what are your outcomes with reaching out to these folks? And what percentage would you guess or know, if you track it, percentage of folks who just declined services?
Yes, Commissioner. I'd have to thank my entire team, the case management and the rapport that we try to build with each, those multiple interactions that we have with each individual. We try to even start with baby steps, and we just continue to keep checking back with them, have a familiar face, let them know they can call us, reach out, they see us often. And I just think the repetitive visit, if you will, builds that bridge and builds that rapport and that trust. And so I think that's where we get our success with resources. We are told no a lot of times, but we don't stop just at our first no. We always keep trying. So that's where I believe that we have our success for the resources that are accepted. I apologize, I don't have the percentage that tell, we don't, I don't track who tells us no. I just, we just keep going back and making contact.
Sure, sure. I was just wondering if you tracked it that way. Just, I'm going to compare and contrast what's taking place, success, engage it with a benchmark, and use that. If this is accurate, I don't even know if this is accurate, but it's a study that they're presenting to the public. And I would like to see if our Sheriff's Department is experiencing the same level of people not wanting to be helped or not wanting to accept services in your interaction. And just, just a question. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think it just shows the great work that our team is doing, because we are a relationship-based enforcement agency. And I'm really proud of the work that you are doing, Sergeant, and continuing the work of the lieutenant. Thank you so much. And I think, you know, we as a board want to make sure that we are not criminalizing homelessness. We do not want to do that. But as Commissioner Andriola stated, our tribal partners really appreciate the work that we did at the End of the World Camp. And we all have a right to use our public spaces. And these are, these are potential risks to health and safety. You've seen with that fire. So I think that we are trying to hold you to a high standard, and we appreciate you taking the work that we've done at the board level to change that ordinance over a lot of controversy, certainly very seriously. And that's why we want you to continue to report back to us, because we feel like we need to make sure the community understands that we're doing this to help people and to help the whole community. And so we really appreciate that. And I would just say, there's also this thought that when we crack down on one camp, they move and leapfrog to another location. You saw that with that fire that we were able to put out. But I think that we need to think about how do we work regionally, and that this is on this board's shoulders as well as the rest of the community, to see how we can make sure that we're not impacting other communities when we do this enforcement. So, and continuing to, you know, do a hand up and giving people the help that they need. And I think we, I was at a homeless, oh my gosh, it was a conference like two years ago, and it's something like 1,000 contacts that some folks need to finally say, yes, I'm ready. And so your patience and working that is really incredible. So I think that we are really excited about the work you're doing and seeing how we can continue to support you and then ensure that we're, you know, treating everyone with the dignity and respect that they deserve in Washoe County.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other board members?
Sure. Just a follow-up. You know, when I asked this question, it was just to get information. I'm not trying to say that Reno is not doing the good work as well. And I know you folks are doing a great work. The question was, just to get information, I'm just trying to get a sense. I keep hearing from people that many of the homeless folks, unhoused folks, or whatever the correct word is, don't want, some of them don't want to help. And it looks like in this particular study, it was about 64%. And so I just wanted to get your perspective on that, and not to diminish anybody's work. And I understand you keep going back. And we need that, because maybe you have to ask somebody 22 times before they say yes, and the 22nd time, the 23rd time, whatever it takes. I don't know what it takes. But I'm trying to get a sense of, are folks just dismissing the idea that they want help, or they can get help, or they need help, or just, I wanted to get that on the record, if you had any sense for it. Not, not that anybody's doing a good job, not that anybody's doing a bad job. Everything, everybody's trying the best. I understand that. But it's, it's, it's just disheartening when so much of a large, a large percentage of folks don't want help, when you're, when you're there to help them, when you offer a helping hand, and people, some, at least in this particular study, 64% of them didn't want that. So how do we get to make it easier for folks to ask for help and accept help? That's what I'm trying to get to. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anything else for us today? Okay, we appreciate your hard work, and we look forward to also discussing how we can support your work in the jail. We are really proud of the progressive things that you're doing to make sure that we're making people productive members of our society. And thank you for your work with that. And can't wait to take a tour in the new year and hear additional updates. Do you have anything else for us, Captain?
No, Madam Chair, unless you would like that second presentation, it's at the board's discretion.
Unless the board, I mean, we received in our packets and not seeing, okay. So we will, we will discuss that in a few months here, and I will touch base with you about getting that tour scheduled.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, Captain. Okay, we'll now move into donations. Commissioner Garcia, do you mind reading those into the record for us?
Of course, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The first three items include various donations for the Human Services Agency to support CPS seniors and homelessness. And then the last item in the block is a special thank you to the estate of Jackie Diggle for the generous donation of $32,400 for the humane care and treatment of animals at Regional Animal Services. And I forgot to say, I moved to approve.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia and a second by Commissioner Andriola. Any questions from the board? And Madam Clerk, any public comment?
There's nobody signed in for this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. With a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into our consent items. Do any board members want to pull a consent item? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, while folks are looking at that, is there any public comment on consent?
There is. We have Penny Brock signed in.
Thank you very much.
Penny Brock, for the record, I would like an explanation as a taxpayer. On page nine is 9b.1. This deals with the budget. An increase of $31 million to date and $4 million over a year. We have a budget deficit. What, why is this increase of $31 million to date and $4 million over a year? This is very concerning to taxpayers. Is this why you're going to the legislature and asking them to raise the property tax cap? Is this why you want to raise the C tax? Because you're overspending on the budget? You may have heard about Elon Musk and Doge in Washington, DC, finding all kinds of fraud, waste, and abuse. We as taxpayers in Washoe County don't understand. We want to know, is there waste, fraud, and abuse going on in our budget? You'll be considering the new budget for the next fiscal year. I think it starts in March or April. We're expecting another increase in the budget. You're already getting $1.2 billion for a population less than 500,000 people. You heard Janet Butcher earlier this morning talk about looking at other counties in America with comparable size. And one county wasn't even spending $1 million. Why are we at $1 billion? That's a B as a boy. So I saw that the CFO walked in. Perhaps she can explain to the taxpayers on record why there is the problem in 9b.1 with our budget of $1.2 billion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other comments from the board on consent? Not seeing any. I'm looking for a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on the consent? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We are now moving into our general items. And this wasn't on our green sheet, but I was hoping that we could look at blocking one item, which is item 11 for the board, since we have a lot of meaty items on the rest of the agenda. So I am willing to make a motion to block item 11.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Any questions on that motion from the board? And Madam- And Madam Clerk, any public comment on item 11?
There is none.
Okay. With a motion and a second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We'll now move into item 10, Manager Brown.
Item 10 is a discussion and possible direction to staff regarding the disposition of a deteriorating six-foot-tall, 1,151-foot-long precast concrete panel, concrete panel wall located along the interface of the Arrow Creek Parkway within Washoe County right-of-way and along the rear property line of 14 residential lots, beginning at 13430 Field Creek Lane and ending at 13560 Field Creek Lane. The concrete panel wall is located on Arrow Creek Parkway within Washoe County right-of-way and was constructed by Southwest Point Development in 1999 as part of the off-site improvements for the Arrow Creek Residential Development. Possible approaches include repair, replacement, or removal, with associated cost estimates ranging between $75,000 and $400,000, and considerations for the transfer of ownership from Washoe County to the abutting and individual residential properties.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, come on up.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects. The item before you is a continuation of an item in a presentation from last year regarding the wall along the Parkway. At that, at that time, there were questions regarding the ownership of the wall, regarding the development agreement with Southwest Point and responsibilities that might exist within that agreement. And there was some additional direction to continue to work with the abutting residents along Arrow Creek Parkway. That, that, that wall exists along the back of their lots. Since that time, we have had those meetings, multiple meetings with representatives and the residents. I have sent out the surveyors. They have confirmed that the location of the wall is indeed on Washoe County right-of-way. It is Washoe County's wall. And I've also spent quite a bit of time re-reviewing the development agreement with Southwest Point, looking for any piece of information that might indicate that there was some responsibility on their part. That does not exist. We accepted the right-of-way and the infrastructure within the right-of-way. So the wall is Washoe County's. After meeting with the residents, confirming the cost of repair, looking at what the standard of practice is for Washoe County's infrastructure within right-aways, and I have to be clear that we don't own any sound walls or walls in any other areas of Washoe County with one exception. So this is out of standard. This is not a standard of practice, I should say, for this ownership. The wall needs to be repaired. It has certainly reached a point where we need to find resolution and move forward on, from this item. So based on that and conversations that I've had internally, my recommendation is for Washoe County to repair the wall, to subsequently transfer ownership of the wall to the abutting property owners. And that way, we absolve ourselves of any future liabilities or responsibilities for this wall. And it brings this portion of right-of-way into conformance, which with the rest of the standard of practice of right-of-way for Washoe County. If, if you choose to go that direction, my recommendation would be to bring back an agreement with the abutting property owners. As part of that agreement, we would perform on Washoe County's, as Washoe County, a boundary line adjustment to move that wall effectively onto their property, moving it off of Washoe County's right-of-way. That agreement would also provide for permanent access. Think of it as an easement to gain access to the front of the wall so that the property owners can maintain that wall in the future. We'd also include, at the request of the, of the residents and confirmed with our legal staff, collective covenant of ownership of the wall for all 14 property owners, not individually, but a collective covenant that all 14 of the abutting residents would own the wall, a 1/14th share. And that the work that Washoe County needs to do to repair that wall and bring it back up to an acceptable standard, that would have to be done through a capital project. So I would come back with a recommendation for funding for that capital project. And then also, as part of that agreement, include a transfer of owner, of, excuse me, a transfer of warranty, both a materials warranty for the new wall panels that will be installed, and also a transfer of the warranty for workmanship. This recommendation, again, is made to bring this part of right-of-way into conformance with the rest of Washoe County's right-of-way, to resolve this issue and to move forward. I've also styled the staff report, so if you have other direction to me, of course, as staff, we will take that direction. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm looking to the board. Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Garcia?
No questions. I just wanted to say thank you for putting forth those recommendations. I think you thought of all the things. We were very, at least I can't speak on behalf of my fellow commissioners. I was just really uncertain about the ownership of the wall. So I thank you, thank legal, for looking at this more carefully. I feel a lot more comfortable today. And I really love that you even thought of, you know, the collective covenant and the transfer of warranty after the repair. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea Ola.
I'm also going to echo Commissioner Garcia's comments. I also want to recognize the distinguished folks that are here and those that aren't, who've worked really hard in terms of the owners and representing a solution that has had a wonderful history. I was told 19 years. Is that right? 19 years? So to be able to come up with a solution that's amenable, and it's really kudos to you as well, Dwayne, for navigating and legal as well. So I just really want to thank everyone for navigating a really challenging topic that seems to now have a resolution. And I think we all appreciate that. The complexity of it was, I certainly remember the meetings that I attended with the homeowners. And it, it really proves to end up dotting every i, crossing every t, and really sharing the opportunity to solve something that, again, has complexity, that now has a, hopefully, in a minute, maybe has a resolution and direction. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's nice to be at this point in time, but, you know, think about this. What do you think that wall would have cost to bill 19 years ago? Probably half, 10% of what we're going to pay, what we might have to pay. So none of us were here then. We're here now. And now we'll get to pick up the pieces. Somebody should have addressed this a long time ago. As soon as I heard about it, I, I saw what was taking place. And, and I, to the taxpayers who say, why are we building a wall for these 14 people, 14 homeowners? It's because we own it. It wasn't, something slipped through the cracks a long time ago, and nobody ever wanted to address it. So hopefully, we'll put this to bed and move forward and not run into this kind of thing again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds like the board is in alignment. Madam Clerk, a public comment?
We do have Penny Brock signed in.
Penny Brock, for the record, it says in this agenda item that the possible approach is, is to repair, replace, or remove, with estimated cost between $75,000 and $400,000. I did not hear the staffer talk about, it sounds like he's recommending to replace. But then we, as the taxpayers that are going to pay for it, how much are we going to pay? It's between 75 and 400K. Again, we're facing a budget crisis. Staffers don't have the option. We've got a budget problem. I hope when they come back, that we need some bids here. We need to know what will work, maybe not the fanciest or, or whatever. But it's taxpayer money. Please do the responsible thing with our taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion in the staff report. And so if there are no comment, additional comments or questions, well, Commissioner Clark, you're signed in, I guess.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. So now, Miss Brock brings up some important considerations, you know, for $70,000 versus $400,000. I think that before we vote on the exact number, we need to see some bids. I want to put this to bed as soon as possible. I know every linear foot of this fence is going to cost more tomorrow than it does today. That's just the way the world is working. So we need to have some bids, I think. We need to have some options. We need to see some renderings. I don't know what we're going to do. Just do we just throw, just throw the $400,000 cap on it? What if it comes in at more than $400,000? So how do we get to, now that it sounds like we're in agreement that we need to fix this, how are we going to fix it? And how much is it going to cost? How long is this going to take? And the details, please?
Well, I will say, and of course, Mr. Smith can chime in, that is what the motion is, that staff has recommended. This is not done today. I know that this community wants to see this be done today, but we have to come back with these details and with an agreement with the neighborhood. And so that's really what the motion is put forth before us. But Mr. Smith, would you like to say anything else?
Again, for the record, Dwayne Smith, I, I think to Commissioner Clark's point, that's the reason I styled it, based on, on those concerns, so that we do come back with that detailed information, both from a bidding standpoint and a cost estimate standpoint, but also just as importantly, with the agreement with the abutting property owners, so that, that all these pieces are in harmony, are in alignment, before I can present that to you for the final, for the final motion. So I hope that provides a little bit of clarity.
So, so thank you for that answer. So with that in mind, we can maybe modify this to, to read that we're in agreement that we're going to do something. But until we have some numbers, you know, it's like a blank check right now for $400,000. Is, is that, is that what we're voting on? Could be up to that much?
That's not what the motion says, Commissioner Clark, that staff is recommending. But if you would like to make a motion and style it in a different way, I'd feel free. That it's the time to do that.
So again, I'm concerned just about putting that estimate. Do we have anything, do we have written estimates now? Or is this, this is just, have you talked to people? Do we have anything in writing what it may cost? Or this is a guestimate on the part of your department?
Again, Dwayne Smith, for the record, through the chair to the commissioner, Commissioner Clark, at the last presentation, I brought forward that information. This is a estimate of upwards of $400,000 to do the appropriate repair, to bring this wall back to an acceptable condition, a condition that it will be reasonable to maintain and that will perform as intended for the next time period. That information was, was generated based on site inspections, based on reaching out to the material suppliers of the concrete panels. So it's a very, it's a very realistic number. I also would, would feel like it's important for you to know that we also looked at alternatives. One of those alternatives was to replace the concrete panels with wood panels. That was initially thought to be the lowest-cost approach. That actually, based on the, the, the overall wall itself, the pilasters, the spacing, the sizes, and the material types, it actually would be, if not a little bit more, basically the same price. So the concrete panels are the best and the most cost-effective approach to make that repair to this wall. The $75,000, just for clarity, is what the cost estimate was that we received to demolish the entire wall. So that's where the $75,000 comes from. So I want to be real clear that the cost estimate is around $380,000 to repair the wall, to replace the panels, to seal the existing panels and the new panels, and to paint the wall, to bring it back to a condition that's acceptable for long-term durability.
Very well. Thank you. Based on the clarification, and I agree with the motion the way it stands.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrea.
To move to direct staff to develop a program of repair for the failed sections of the precast concrete panel wall located along the interface of the Arrow Creek Parkway right-of-way and the rear property line of 14 residential lots between, beginning at 13430 Field Creek Lane and ending at 13560 Field Creek Lane, including a recommended funding source for the work and an associated project schedule. As a condition of the repair program, staff shall develop an agreement for approval by each abutting property owner to effectively transfer ownership and future maintenance responsibilities of the repaired wall to each individual property owner, and providing for property owners access to the wall for future maintenance, with the direction resulting in a consistent approach for ownership, maintenance, and repair of infrastructure located within Washoe County right-of-way.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move into item 12. Mr. Smith, you're back up. Manager Brown?
Item 12 is a discussion and possible direction to, number one, affirm the November 14, 2023 adoption of Resolution R 23-149 that suspended the Golden Valley Artificial Recharge Program. Participant fee collection from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2033, continued minimum field activities in support of groundwater injection permit, and required all program participants to bring any past due accounts current through the processes identified in ordinance 1548. Or, number two, possible direction to staff to develop a plan to terminate the artificial recharge program, which includes consideration for monetizing and disbursement of all program fund assets to the existing artificial recharge program participants, total fund balance, including water rights, credit sale, estimated at $1.2 million, and other related matters as required. Or, three, possible other direction to staff.
Thank you very much. Mr. Smith?
A good afternoon again. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects. As requested, this item before you today is to affirm the direction that was given by the board as part of Resolution R 23-149 on November 14, 2023, or possible other directions, such as termination of, complete termination of the artificial recharge program. Resolution R 23149 had some specific requirements. Those requirements were to pause new invoicing for a period of 10 years, to continue the limited field work, to measure water levels and take water quality data in support of a permit that Washoe County has with the state of Nevada, to maintain the predictive model that was developed that allowed us to make the prior recommendations in support of Resolution 23149, and to also work with the delinquent property owners. Those directions were very clear to staff, but there's been some continuous concerns from the community, from, from parts of the community, that feel potentially like staff was not following your direction, and that there was some questions about some of the fees that were paid, the, the monthly fee paid prior to the approval of the resolution. So I just wanted to affirm with you a couple of things. First of all, there has been no new invoicing to any of the 598 program participants as directed. That's evidenced in the fact that the fund balance has not gone up. As a matter of fact, it's gone down slightly. We continue to take the field measurements as directed, and we continue to submit that information to the state. And we've worked with the program participants with delinquent accounts. In fact, there was over 70 delinquent accounts. In fact, there was over 70 delinquent accounts when we came before you last year. It's down to 28 now. So today, we're asking for affirmation of the direction that was given in 2023, or possible alternative direction to terminate the program in its entirety, monetize the assets, and disperse those, that fund balance to the 598 properties within the artificial recharge boundary, or potentially some other direction in between. The reason I added that possible other direction in between is because we do have 28 outstanding accounts. And those 28 outstanding accounts typically would be submitted to the treasurer's office and go through a, through a leaning process after we spend about three months working with those folks. It's been over a year, and we've done, I think, some good things to help bring those folks into conformance with the program requirements. I've held off sending that information because, as you directed, we're continuing to work with those residents. But as a, as a point of clarity, the other 570 program participants have paid their, their fees are current, and creates equity within that part of the program. So this is my request today, is to affirm direction of the program, or to give direction to develop a termination plan. And if it's to continue the program as directed through Resolution 23149, I'd like some direction on how to resolve the outstanding 28 accounts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And I will start with Commissioner Clark, because he asked for this item to come back before the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I realize that most of the folks have paid in, in good faith, and those folks shouldn't be penalized because certain folks haven't paid. That being said, to equalize this, I would like to see the folks that are being charged late fees and the 28 folks, I'd like to see their late fees be removed and their, their payments removed. And I'd like to also see refunds to the rest of the folks, and that still will leave some $600,000 or $700,000 in the account. Keep that account at the county and use it as needed in the future. But try and make everybody whole by refunding the last year, or whatever it is, whatever the amount is, to one person. Give refunds to everybody. It's money that, it's their money that we've collected. It's their money that we've been sitting on, and we should give the money back to the people that are paying for a service the county is not supplying. Keep the money that's available in the account, in the account if it's needed in the future. I think the folks that I've talked to are not asking for a complete and total refund like they might have done at Incline Village when they were overcharged for taxes up there. They just want to be, no more bills, no more threatens of late business, and give everybody a small refund to equal that of whatever. That's what I'd like to see, if I had a magic wand, but I don't have a magic wand. So that's what I'm asking my fellow commissioners to consider, making everybody whole to the tune of whatever it is for the 28 people that are late and their penalties, and refunds to everybody else, and that'll still leave us, I think, over half a million dollars in the county's funds to use at a later date. What, what would that number be approximately?
Mr. Smith?
Through the chair to the commissioner, thank you, sir, for that. And I did come prepared to help answer that question. And I don't know if we can get the overhead. I did, can we turn on the overhead, please?
There it is.
Just quickly, I want to describe what you see on the overhead. So these are the 28 accounts. I've removed the names and the addresses. What you see here is the, this is the account that's the, has the highest total of delinquency, which is $1,022.09. You can see that there's a significant number that are in the $460 range. Then you can see that there's another group that are under $100. If, I appreciate the, the thought about how to bring everybody current and issue partial refunds. If we issue partial refunds up to $1,000 to each of the program participants that are current, I guess basically all of the 597 program participants, the balance in the account would be about $82,000 after that dispersment. So we wouldn't have the half a million, it would be closer to $100,000. When I brought the item before Resolution 123, or excuse me, 23149, there was some commitments that we wanted to make, and utilizing the fund balance to meet those commitments over the next 10 years was the idea. So that was that limited amount of field work, taking some water elevations, water quality data, maintaining the model. We estimated that to be about $30,000 a year to do that. So obviously, there wouldn't be sufficient fund balance in order to perform those same services and issue a dispersment of up to $1,000 to all the ratepayers. That's one of the ratepayers. The, again, the majority are in the 465, and then with a handful that are below 100. Another approach might, might be to work more with the, the other balance, the others, and work specifically with that single property owner that has the $1,000 outstanding balance. That would result in a much different picture. That would maintain a much higher balance in the fund to allow for those continual operational directives that you had provided last year.
Sure. Sure. I appreciate the clarity now of the actual numbers. Before, it was just guesstimating and trying to procrastinate, or not procrastinate, prognosticate what we had there. So, so thank you for, for that clarity. I'm open to any suggestion that makes sense, keeping in mind, if we do any type of refund, this is their money going back to them. This isn't coming out of the general account. This is coming out of an account that they paid into for specific services that weren't utilized for whatever reason. And, and that, I can understand the people protesting this by not paying because they weren't getting what, what they were being charged for in their mind. So I'm open to any suggestions from any of the commissioners, how we can just get this done and let these people live in peace, and, and figure out how we can end up with some money in the county coffers to use in the future if needed. And if not, we might, if it gets back to where it was, we might have to reinstate this program. But in the interim, sending people late notices and putting their properties in jeopardy for being sold for delinquent fees, in this case, instead of taxes, I just don't think that has a, a good, a good look for our county. Thank you. The optics are just are not good. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrea.
You looking for a solution?
Oh, no. I just, I see you signed in. If you, you don't necessarily have to address that directly, but yes.
I hear you. I, my initial thought is, well, let me ask a question first. So just to make sure that I understood you correctly, you were saying that if you were to look at possibly refunding essentially everyone, that would end up having an $82,000 balance after dispersments? And you're looking at $30,000 a year that would be needed to provide the sufficient services that are required, therefore it would fall short?
That is correct.
I just want to make sure I understood my notes correctly. And so there are 28 counts outstanding that you're showing right now. What, what is the period of time that those delinquent? I realize that some folks, like the $1,000 balance, outstanding balance has, well, what period of time is that? Just curious.
Yeah, to the commissioner, through the chair, and kind of in alignment with what Commissioner Clark was talking about, the, the term of these delinquencies, the $1,000, the, the highest balance exceeds the multiple years. The bulk of those in the $400,000, $400, excuse me, $465 range, to Commissioner Clark's point, those were folks that during the public meetings, remember, as directed, we initiated a series of public meetings? And in those public meetings, there was concern and disgruntlement that while there was no water that was being injected into the ground, why were they being charged for that service? And of course, we needed to go through the technical analysis and then bring to you four direction, and that's the direction we received through the resolution. So the majority of those 465 and less are likely associated with those concerns about not injecting water in the ground. So that goes back to 2019, 2020, potentially up through just the last couple of years predominantly.
Madam Chair, may I follow up? Have we reached out, and when I mean reached out, I'm not talking about traditional mail, which I'm guessing all the folks, the 28 have received notices, but have we actually reached out to the homeowner that has that $1,000 plus balance?
I've spoken with him personally.
Is there any indication that he'd like to work on having that get to zero somehow? Have any of the conversations, or do you feel, and I don't want you to necessarily have to feel like you have to speak for him, but is the sentiment that he also, because there's a difference, right? That's why I'm asking of timing. There's a pretty significant lump of the 400 and, I can't read that far, whatever, 455, is that, am I reading that right? There's a group that's 455, close to the 400, then 200, and then it just, you know, it starts dropping off. So the thousand seems to obviously stick out. And I'm just wondering, that's why I was asking for timing, is there any indication that has a, he or she, the owner, has a position that doesn't want to pay it because, were they notified at that time that the recharge program had ceased? I'm just, that's, I'm just trying to figure out timing for the $1,000 person, owner.
Again, through the chair to the commissioner, I can't really speak to what the thoughts of the particular property owner are, but I've heard the wide range of those types of discussions, and not just from this particular property owner, but from others as well.
Well, here's, here's just my initial blush. I'm guessing, speculating, that whether it's automated notices of late notices, or the phone calls, or your time, or staff, is, is also contributing. There's a cost to that.
There is.
And if there is, and are, is there really a return on in terms of that time? And are we using taxpayer dollars effectively? Because we're, there's, there's a position that evidently folks have taken, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but they have taken. So they're standing to that position. So the late notices keep on piling up. At what point do we just say, we're going to forgive all these late notices and just stop it at that point without any refunds in order to keep the balance intact, to provide the services that are needed? And that's just an initial thought that I'm thinking about. I'm not suggesting I have it figured out, but I just feel like, I bet the administrative cost to everyone's time is starting to also add up, let alone if people have taken that position, and that's their position. You know, it's hard to move that needle if that's what they feel, that they're, that they are not paying for something that they're not getting. And that, that's a very rough interpretation, but that's what I believe their position is at, at, at that time. They weren't receiving the services, they're not going to pay for them, and therefore let it go. So it seems to me, if you're going to forgive one, you need to forgive all. The flip side to that are the people who did pay.
Yeah.
And that is the struggle, because you're penalizing, to a certain extent, the people who were responsible and did pay. And when I mean, I'm not saying the other people are irresponsible, they've taken a position that they believe is justifiable. But the reality is, the people who did pay is a far higher number. There were 597 parties in total and 28 that are delinquent. Were those numbers right? So that's a significant number of people who, who chose to pay in full, and then the program stopped. So that, that's, I think, the, the struggle of just forgiving folks who chose not to pay, but at the same time, where do you draw the line? Because we're also spending taxpayer dollars on this subject a lot. I mean, we keep, I've been here since April of 2023, and I think I've heard it almost every meeting, or at least enough that we need to rectify it. So I don't have a solution, but thank you for clarifying all of these questions that I had, and I'm just going to continue to give it thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
In the staff report, it says, it has recommended the Board of County Commissioners direct staff to develop a termination plan. That termination plan would end after all these operational expenditures are gone, the 30K per year approximately, for the field work and the water quality. Is that what you're thinking?
Through the chair to the commissioner, no. The recommendation that I put in the staff report was a recognition that the water levels have continued to be unchanged, especially in the lower, lower areas of the valley, that the reporting and the work that was done identified that there is a very, very low likelihood that artificial recharge will ever resume within the area. It also recognized that if artificial recharge ever resumed in the area, for whatever reason, that it would have to be rethought, because it's not equitable currently. The location of the recharge wells, the location of the homes, this does not create a equitable situation or a, or a situation that we would have today if we were initiating a program as such. The last reason I want to give you, Commissioner, through the chair, is that if we were to monetize the water rights and the water credits, add those to the fund balance, the dispersment to the 598 property owners would be around $2,000. I'll just use that as a, as a round number. Remember, when we came before you about a year ago, the, the discussion was, we would continue to take water level measurements, we would continue to do those field activities, we won't be injecting water, and so the fund balance will come down to a point. If we wait the 10 years and we only have the balance of the water rights and the water credits to monetize and disperse, it would be probably about half of that amount or less. So it may not, it may not be meaningful at that point in the future, 10 years from now, or now, nine years from now, to do something along those lines. But I also want to be real clear. When we went through those public meetings, 25% approximately of the residents wanted to terminate the program and receive a dispersment of the funds that they have paid into that program. 75%, some combination of that 75% wanted either to keep the program operational, pay the $22.66 a month, or to do what ultimately your direction to us was. So about two thirds, about three quarters of the folks wanted to keep some form of the program around. But I think that these discussions, and I think that, that the, that the, that with this little bit of time, has, has really reinforced for me why that, why that recommendation that I made in the staff report is there. That, that's, I firmly believe that. As your county engineer, and as the work that was done to support all those efforts, I firmly believe that that's going to be the case nine years from now. So I wanted to present that information to you.
I'm good right now. Okay. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman.
So the cost, the annual cost for what you do, checking everything, is $30,000?
Approximately $30,000, yes.
If you just did that every five years, your funds would last a lot longer. And we haven't heard from the people yet either, so just a thought.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman, and Commissioner Andrea.
Thanks, Madam Chair. In looking at the recommendations that you have provided, and Commissioner Garcia was pointing pointing, pointing them out, and, and I like your number three or possible other. So I'm going to take a stab at what I think may be an opportunity. I think, I think the sentiment among everyone is really to make this whole and to make this equitable for everyone. We have owners, property owners who have paid in full, we have property owners, 28, who have been delinquent in various stages. And I'm wondering if we looked at the option in terms of giving direction to staff, to develop a term, a plan to terminate the program for future consideration, which includes, again, monetizing all of the program assets and subsequent dispersments of all program Taking into consideration that those that are delinquent would have their delinquency subtracted from the dispersment. So I'm going to make this up. So if somebody is, if you calculate it all out and you look at the assets and you look at the program as a whole, and I'm going to make this up, each owner would get $1,000, let's say hypothetically, but they have an outstanding balance of, let's say, 100, then they would receive $900. The owner that paid in full would receive the full thousand. That way, we are taking into consideration a fair and equitable approach for those who've paid in full and those that have a delinquent balance to have that credited accordingly. So their dispersment would be less based on the amount that's owed. I'm just throwing out consideration for that. The concern, and this is why giving direction to staff to develop a plan, because you would bring it back, is to also take into consideration what that future holds too, so that we don't have exposure for the county as well, the residents particularly, if in fact, funds need to be included. So I, I'm not sure if that makes sense of what I'm thinking to be fair and equitable, but I just thought I would throw that out.
Great. Commissioner Clark, and then we have public commenters, and it's great that we've had this robust discussion, so they can give us their input. I know we've seen also online, public commenters who also just want to keep with option one, and that seemed like the majority of folks who are online. So I look forward to hearing from folks in chambers today. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I really agree with my fellow commissioners. We shouldn't penalize people who've paid their bills on time.
Right.
That's, that's where I'm coming from. But we also shouldn't penalize folks who were not paying in protest for something they weren't getting. So to Commissioner Androla's point, let's say we gave everybody out there $1,022.09 back, and except for the person who owes $1,022.09. They get clear. Everybody else gets a refund. If they owe $400, that comes off the refund, and that, that equalizes everybody. Everybody got the exact same refund, and those that hadn't paid it in don't get a refund because they hadn't paid it in. That's, that's the way to equalize this thing. And whatever the outstanding, the folks with outstanding of $400, $500 or whatever, $200, deduct that from the $1,022. Give everybody $1,022 unless you owe $1,022, and then you don't get paid. I think that's a way to equalize it, so everybody gets treated fairly. Those that didn't pay don't get anything back, and those that did pay get their money back. That's just a thought that I have. And then secondly, on the $1,022.09, I think that's what it is, how much of that was penalties? Is any of that just payments that just, no penalties? That's straight what they owed? Okay, got it. All right. That, that, I think that's an equal way to satisfy everybody. Still leave the money, some more money than what we talked about earlier, I think, than the 82,000 in the account and move forward. And any of the folks that still think it's a great idea and want to contribute, they could do like a lot of folks up at Incline Village did and didn't take their refund. So give them the option of doing that. Those that think it's a great idea, don't have to take the money. Those who want the money, get it back. Those that owe the money, don't owe any money, and they're not going to have their house foreclosed upon. Thank you.
Okay. With that, Madam Clerk, is there any, well, I know there's public comments, so if you'll help us with public comment, thank you.
Yes, we have several, so I'll call two names. Please queue up if you're second. Elaine Hanford, followed by Lori Rodriguez. And I do have documents to distribute for Ms. Hanford.
I trust you all have copies of my statement today. Elaine Hanford, professional geologist, retired, and a PhD in the geosciences. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about the recharge program. Let my words here today and the appended statement become part of the official record. We've talked about, heard a lot of comments already about equity. Equity cannot be achieved in Golden Valley because the geology controls the hydrology. The geology cannot be changed. Therefore, the issue before yesterday is to address the staff report, and it's primarily programmatic. It charges, quote unquote, that Washoe County inappropriately correct, collected the required fees associated with the recharge program. This is a false accusation. Under ordinances 1116 and 1548, the program was established and governed with a flat fee structure of 2266 per month. Injected water volumes varied, ranging up to as much as 80.7 acre feet in 2013, with no adjustment in the fee structure based on injected water volumes. Those participants failing to pay the required monthly fee for up to three and a half years, which equates to the 1,000, et cetera, broke the implied recharge program contract with Washoe County. Fees were suspended under Resolution 2364 and then continued under Resolution 23149 that also called for continued monitoring of groundwater conditions, maintaining the necessary permits and water rights over the next decade. The water rights component of the program ensures that water will be available for injection to respond to conditions of natural and/or human-induced drought. Natural drought is a common occurrence in western Nevada. Given the rapidity of economic growth in southern Washoe County, one should also prudently expect that human-induced drought will also occur again. Through public meetings and surveys, the vast majority of participants have repeatedly expressed support for retaining the program. Those 28 who are not in full compliance do continue to receive benefits of the program. It maintains their property values, it maintains the quality and overall character of the water we derive from that valley. As we recently witnessed, failure to maintain reasonable preparedness resulted in no water available in the fire hydrants.
And I'm so sorry, we have to be strict with the three minutes, but we have your full statement, and it's so nice to see you again, and thank you so much for your comments. We will let you know. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Lori Rodriguez, followed by Michael Rodriguez.
For the record, misdirection. That is what bullies do when they are caught. They try to shift the blame to someone else so they look like the victim. This is what is happening here. Someone does not want to pay his bill, so he is blaming inappropriate billing. The property owners in Golden Valley have kept a very watchful eye on this program. We were given regular financial reports along with biannual presentations by staff. We were updated on the water levels and quality, status of our permits, as well as the condition of the infrastructure. Questions were taken, and anything that needed to be researched was then relayed to our board. If something were truly wrong, there would be many more people bringing the problem to the county and the property owners' board. In 2023, the property owners of Golden Valley overwhelmingly voted to keep the recharge program in place with current permits, necessary maintenance, regular system checks, in addition to regular well monitoring. There were several well-attended public meetings in which options were discussed. At only one of the meetings were there three people who wanted to end the program and have refunds issued. One of those is someone who comes here regularly. However, there is something inappropriate going on. It is inappropriate for a commissioner on this board to use his position to give preferential treatment to this person to exonerate his debt. It is inappropriate to think that this money can be stolen from the hardworking people and seniors on social security who have consistently paid their dues. Their money went specifically to this account for the purpose of ensuring an uninterruptible water supply when needed, not for paying monies owed by deadbeats. It is inappropriate to think that anyone in the valley would want to sell the water rights that are ours. And it is inappropriate for this commissioner to interfere, as he is not our elected representative and should have referred this matter to Jeanne Herman. It is sad that this commissioner and someone are trying to bully everyone in Golden Valley. By bringing this matter before the board, they prove they are willing to harm everyone in the community because someone thinks he is right. This person does not speak for the 598 property owners, as evidenced by the voting process you saw in 2023. Someone should do the right thing and pay his bill. If not, then he and the others should be subject to the procedures in place by the county to collect the monies of all the property owners who have passed due accounts. So in light of this, I ask you to please leave the program as it stands.
Thank you.
Michael Rodriguez, followed by Cliff Conrad.
I'll stand down. My wife had a better call.
Thank you very much.
Cliff Conrad, followed by Bruce Greenwald.
For the record, Cliff Conrad, lifetime resident, 71 years, born and raised here, 10 years in the valley. I'm one of the ones that paid the $22.66 on time. And I think I also voted to keep the system at, as it stands currently, and I think it was overwhelmingly voted that way for the people in the valley who voted to keep it this way. I don't see why we're back here. I think it's a waste of your time and my time to be standing here talking to you all because I don't think we should be here. We thought the, the issue at hand was put to bed a couple of years ago. Thank you for my time.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Greenwald, followed by Francine Doncic.
For the record, Bruce Greenwald, 3305 Brave Lane in Golden Valley. My wife and I have lived in Washoe County for better than 40 years. We've lived in Golden Valley for 30 years, and I cannot tell you how many meetings I've been to concerning the recharge project, water rights, and water concerns. I, like the last gentleman, I'm concerned of why we're here. Okay? The two years, you, you all made a decision a year ago. The two years before that, we went to eight meetings run by the staff. They were great meetings, hydrologists, geologists. We knew what we were doing. We made a decision. Not everybody was happy, but three, three quarters of the valley voted that way. We turned in our cards. We did what we were supposed to do. We paid our bills. And now I'm going to ask, why would we just listen to one person? And I don't know what's going on, but I do know that I served on the Airport Noise Advisory Panel for four years. I served the Washoe County Nuisance Committee for two years. I know that you have to listen to everybody. Everybody has a right to speak. When I was on the Airport Noise Advisory Panel, we had a lady come up, she wanted to tell us about the lasers being fired from the control tower to the UFOs. Our chairman sat there for a while and said, was there noise? Because that's what this committee is about, and there wasn't. So he turned it back over to the airport board. You know, if, if the stories of Samuel Clemens are true, that whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting over, I'm here to fight over it. And I look at this as an insurance policy for my home. Having money back isn't what I want. I want that water available, and I want the water available for everybody in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Francine Doncic, followed by Terry Doncic.
For the record, Francine Doncic, 9355 Wigwamwe. I've been a resident of Golden Valley for a little over 20 years. Madam Chair and Commissioners, as you've heard from those that have spoken before me, the recharge program is essential for the future of our valley. We bought our property because of the recharge program that was in place. The program is a way, program the way it is currently written, with water rights as part of it, is like an insurance policy, ensuring we are guaranteed uninterruptible water source when needed, and is critical to the value of our property. So it's, it's like our property value. You take our water away, our property isn't worth anything. So as you're saying, under option two, where you look towards terminating our program according to the staff report on page five, and you're talking about anywhere we're getting back from $1,950 to $2,100, that's nothing compared to the cost that it would be if we had to put in infrastructure. Because if our wells go and we don't have any funding, we would be looking at the county, like you had to do in Lemon Valley, putting infrastructure in so that we would have water pipe to our houses. We don't want to go that way. All we are asking at this point is to please reaffirm the original November 14th, 2023 adoption of resolution R23149, which is what the property owners overwhelmingly voted for at that time. We're asking for you to leave it as it is. And for those that have bills, I'm sorry, that's between the county and the district attorneys to figure out how to make them pay or not. We, as the rest of the valley, should not suffer because you've got people that refuse to pay what they owe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Doncic.
For the record, Terry Doncic, 9355 Wigwamwe, Golden Valley, Nevada. The last 21 years, we've resided at that residence. During that time, we've used our well water for exactly what it was for, for drinking, for watering, and for animals if we had them. The important thing about it is, we have the water. If we were to lose this recharge project and our well would go dry, we would lose probably the ability to have water. Because due to the nature of where we're at, we're at an area where our well currently is at 285 feet of depth. We would have to drill to that or deeper to fine water. The current well drilling cost would be prohibitive, probably as much as maybe half to three quarters of a million dollars in deep depth. That is not something your average homeowner can afford. That would include losing the value of our property and losing the ability for us to live in that region. Please reconsider how you are looking at this. For a few thousand dollars, it's not worth the loss of a major amount of a person's investment in a home, just to give somebody back and to let somebody feel good because they didn't pay their bill. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else saying goodbye?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I, I also don't want to relitigate this. I think the board made a really prudent decision, and I, I would like to look at option one as well. I grew up with a well in unincorporated Washoe County, and it was a source of anxiety for my family, and we would have loved a program like this. So that's where I am at, and happy to hear from other board members. So that's where I am at and happy to hear from other board members. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hear what everyone has to say. I live with a well situation. I had to buy extra water rights. I know about this. I'm not trying to take away anybody's water. I'm not trying to make anybody's well run dry. All I'm saying is if the county is charging for something that they're no longer doing, they're not doing it anymore. You can continue to pay all you want, but if you're paying for something you're not getting, that's the individual that I'm talking for in this particular case. I also, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, you said if this program was to be done today, the wells you think are in the wrong places, and it might not make sense to do this, if we could go back in time and then come back and forward into time, this program probably wouldn't be done the way it has been done when it was done. Is that a correct statement? Did I hear you say that earlier in this meeting?
Yes, that is, again, through the chair to the commissioner, that would be a requirement that I would have if the program were to be basically turned back on. We would need to go through that rigorous study to understand what the appropriate approach would be for an artificial recharge program. I think as Elaine accurately identified, the geology governs within the Golden Valley area, and that would have to be accounted for in a different way than what we see today.
Thank you. And I've said this again, and I'll continue to say it. That was then, and this is now. If we had to do this now, it wouldn't be done the exact same way that it was done then. Is that a fair statement?
Through the chair, yes.
Okay. So that's where I'm coming from to the audience, is it might have made sense when it was first inception and when it first was brought forward, but it doesn't make sense when the county quits recharging and when the county now says this may not have been the appropriate action or the appropriate way to do it or the appropriate location to do it. So we're charging for something that we're not doing, and it may not work today based on what we know today versus what we knew then. That's all I want to get on the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Looking to see if there's other board comments or questions on this item. Oh, yes, Vice Chair Herman.
I, following all the history, I've been to lots of meetings with you folks. And, you know, when we vote on something, it's majority rules. And these folks have a lot invested. They gambled and got this program. And they feel that it is their insurance policy. And so we have, I'm thinking that we need to maybe stretch it out longer, but everything is set up. It's been engineered to the hilt. And maybe improvements could be made if somebody did this today. But today, it would cost a lot more. They already have this program. They've done their work. You've done your work. And I feel that affirming what's been done is probably the only fair thing that we can do. Number one.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Andrea.
I really appreciate all of the time that's been spent on this, and I appreciate all of the public comment. I wasn't here when, not that I'm suggesting that I'm not going to be responsible for carrying out my responsibility today, but to me, it seems interesting. I had absolutely no idea that the, well, it was used three quarters of the people. I don't know what the exact number, but the majority of the people voted to support this. And I had already stated that I wasn't necessarily trying to give someone who didn't pay something something that they should have. You know, if you have not paid your bill, you should not be just waived, and I never intended. I just want to make sure that's clear. So if the program is important to the residents, if the hydrologists who also shared the details, so thank you for that, and for staff, you know, really looking at bringing this because of what we continue to hear is, I keep on getting late notices. I keep on getting late notices. So now we're all clear. We're all clear now. People didn't pay, and people did. And the majority of the people in Golden Valley want this to stay. And the reality is, is that my question is, if somebody owes something, there's a recourse to it. And I think that the staff, if there's looking at any direction, I would want to affirm what has been decided, not only in the resolution that was put forward, but also by the voters and the people who actually live there. And more importantly, give staff direction that they need to collect this. It's owed. It's hard. That's why originally, when I was thinking about, at least if people got their money back, the people who didn't, they could at least get something back. And then actually, the others who didn't pay would, you know, not be rewarded for it. But it seems to me like the amount of time and money also, it's almost like sunk cost, right? In a county, there's sunk cost. And at some point, it's not fair to the people who did pay, but at the same time, if staff keeps on having to, if we're paying, if taxpayers are paying for these collections, I mean, $21.28 compared to the $1,000. I don't know where everyone lies, but what I know is the program, in my opinion, needs to stay intact, and Washoe County needs to collect the money, balancing the fact that we're not spending $100 to collect a dollar. So that's my struggle with the motion, especially on option number three for possible other direction. I mean, I don't know technically, legally, what can be done to collect this money without continuing to spend staff time. I don't know. Is there a response that you might have in terms of what can be exercised? I don't want to put you on the spot, but how do we collect something if no one's going to pay it? What's the recourse? Is there a legal recourse?
Through the chair to the commissioner. If I might offer maybe staff's perspective. I think we've clearly heard all of you affirming what the focus group has come up as part of their public comment. I think you've heard me say that we were successful in bringing all the 28 people over the last year into conformance with the requirements of the program. I think I clearly heard all of you, and specifically Commissioner Clark, talking about the $1,022. And I clearly heard Commissioner Herman talking about understanding that the balance, if a dispersment was made of that amount to all the program participants, that it would significantly reduce the program budget, the fund balance. So as I was listening to the public comment from the focus group, and I appreciate their input, I was kind of scribbling some numbers down and running some numbers. I think that there might be a way to manage to the budget, the remaining fund balance, if there was a dispersment made to bring all the program participants to net zero. Of course, everybody but one would receive some level of refund. That leaving the approximately $82,000 balance in the fund, what we would have to do as staff is significantly reduce our field activities. So instead of going out several times a year, maybe we would only go out one time per year. I think that's important, that we continue to go out and take that data, to maintain that data set that we've had for many years. We would probably not continue the injection permit with the state. And that's okay, because the injection permit is something that if we terminate that permit, we can turn around and reapply for that permit and have another permit within 60 to 90 days. So I don't think that's a big issue to maintain that permit. And that would significantly reduce staff time. I think that we would also maintain the model, because as you recall, we invested money into that model, and we need to maintain that. I think we could do, we could meet all of these objectives and do it in a way that we would minimize the impact to the fund balance, minimize the amount of staff time involved in this program, really use that word pause for the next nine years until that reevaluation in 2033. That might be my recommendation, Chair.
So a combo of one and two, well, but you're not looking at termination as far as two. Because I'm not interested in termination at this point, but I'm okay with a compromise. So that sounds like the compromise that you're looking at is we'd still monitor, we'd still keep up that model, ensure that, you know, we're doing the work that, the minimal work that's required to also ensure that we're keeping the residents informed of their situation as well.
Yeah, again, Chair, I'm thinking of ways to absolutely minimize the amount of staff time.
Right.
And at the same time, keep the program and meet the requirement to bring equity based on all of the program participants.
Commissioner Clark is signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Another couple of questions. So I want to put this proper perspective, make sure people understand where I'm coming from. When was the last time that the county was actually injecting water into that basin, into the aquifer?
Through the chair to the commissioner, the first quarter of 2016.
So from 2016 until now, we haven't had to inject that aquifer with water. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So again, I'm not asking for this thing to be dismantled. I'm not asking for, you know, if we're not doing something from 2016 until now, nine years, we haven't had to inject, keep the system intact. I don't want to turn it off. If the citizens see that their water table is receding, then let's start the program again. That's what I'm all for, and I think the compromise is keep everything intact. Let's just get rid of the billing and the late fees and whatever. To the point of the other folks that said, I'm not their commissioner, rightfully so. I'm not doing this for votes. I'm not doing this to pander to anybody. I just think it's wrong to be associated, I don't want to be associated with a county that charges people for something they're not doing. That's as simple as that. It doesn't get simpler. We're not doing it for nine years. Yep, we have continued to charge people. That's not right. I would stick up for anybody who is paying for something they're not getting. I'm not trying to take away anybody's water. I'm not trying to devalue their property. I'm not trying to disenfranchise whatever they voted on. But if we're not doing it, quit charging for it and quit sending out late notices. And by gosh, I don't want to be associated with a county that would foreclose on somebody's house for $1,000. How would anybody in this audience like to lose your house for $1,000 for paying something that you weren't getting? That's what this boils down to me. Let's figure out a way to put this behind us, keep the system in play, keep some money in the slush fund if we have to re-energize the system and move forward. That's all I'm looking for, and I think it's a simple fix. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Smith, if you could help us, if there are no additional questions, and if this compromise sounds like something that the commission is interested in, if you could help us on how to craft that motion, that would be helpful for the board.
Chair, I would recommend, based on the input from the community and the board, that the program stay in place as identified in the resolution from last year. We issue refunds to all the program participants to bring all the account holders to zero. And if that means sending reimbursements or refunds to the 597 ratepayers, then we would do that. We have the data. We have the understanding. We have the ability to do that. And that we would terminate the recharge permit with the state to reduce the staff time required to manage that. We would reduce the field efforts required for the data collection to reduce, again, the staff time. And we would do everything to help minimize costs to maintain that available fund balance after this dispersment. Does that help?
Looking to the board to see if everyone understands that recommendation from staff.
I'll move as presented by Mr. Smith when you're ready, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Andrea. Looking for a second on that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any conversation from the board? I'm not seeing any. All right. With that, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, for your time. I know there are people here, and thank you, Mr. Smith. I know there are people here who are here for our public hearings. We are delayed, as you probably can tell. So what we're going to do is go into item 13 and then item 14. This board needs a break, so we will take a short break to eat and take care of ourselves for a bit, and then we'll come back after those items. And so, just so everyone knows, you can also keep up with the agenda if you don't want to just sit in here on YouTube, because we will be, we're streaming that live as well, just for folks. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item 13. Manager Brown.
Item 13, recommendation to accept the county manager's recommendation to appoint Andrew McDonald as a Washoe County registrar of voters effective February 11, 2025, with an annual salary of $175,240, and if approved, to direct the Washoe County clerk within 10 days of February 11, 2025, to certify the new appointment of a registrar of voters to the Secretary of State's office. This appointment is pursuant to NRS 244.164.
Thank you very much. And Manager Brown, do you have anything for us on this item?
No, Madam Chair, but we do have representatives from Human Resources if the commission would like a comment on the process.
Okay. I'm looking to the board to see if there's any questions or comments on this recommendation from Manager Brown. Vice Chair Herman?
Well, if anybody has questions for them, that'd be fine, but I do have some comments to make.
Of course.
Should I do that now?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm very concerned about this appointment. In the past, this board got three choices that was limited down to about three people. And then we would vote on those three. We could research those three. We could interview those three. And we would actually be making the choice and the vote. This time, and I questioned it when we were doing it, this time, it was done differently. And it was done by one commissioner, and the number varied a couple of times, but eight or nine county employees. So that's how that went. In the first round, we all agreed on someone who I would still vote for, if that person was still on this page. You know, I look at Mr. Williams' writings, and I tend to agree with some of them. I spent the whole day of the election just observing and watching what was going on. And I watched as we proceeded through the rest of the election. I'm not sure whether I'm not sure whether we need to go back to the drawing board and get back to the way we did it before, where we actually, and I'm not sure what the law is about how, how to do that, or why the decision was made to change that. But I just, I could not vote for the person that's listed on here for ROV. I think our citizens deserve someone who is really, really super qualified. And I'm afraid for what, you know, we're not doing our job if we don't look into this a little bit better and maybe go back to the drawing board and, and see how that works. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. And I really appreciate the time you ta, you took to be part of the hiring panel on this. And I know we've, I think all the Commissioners have participated. Have you participated in a hiring panel yet, Commissioner Andriola and Commissioner Garcia? I have had that ability as well. And we changed that process, this Board, the appointment process, and I don't remember when, because all the years are one big year to me, but a few years ago with Human Resources, because we wanted to make sure previously, Board members weren't even part of interview processes. And now the Board has a member to represent as part of the interview process to understand kind of the background of things. And, and that was something I really wanted to see us take part of, because when we appoint these recommendations from the manager, it is the County Commission who's making that appointment. So I appreciate you taking the time. I'm sorry that the outcome was not what you wanted. I'm looking to see if any other Board members have comments before I open it up to public comment. I'm not seeing that anyone does. So, Madam Clerk, public comment?
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Susie Van Ness.
Penny Brock, for the record, this is, this is a very important election integrity issue. Who will oversee our elections, which will again, begin a year from now? We need someone qualified. What I read in the agenda, the attachment, there wasn't much there to tell us that this person is qualified. I'm sure he's very nice, but being nice does not qualify you to deal with the public, the budget personnel, state and federal election law. This takes time. What I found when I looked at, because the attachment was so lacking, I went into the San Diego County where he worked. He was an IT guy. I think he's probably really phenomenal in IT. He worked in, he graduated in IT, that's his degree. He worked in IT for San Diego County for like 19 years. And then in 2022, they made him the Assistant ROV. Didn't have the qualifications, so we don't know why. And then in 20, that was in 22 and 23, they, he went to Clark County. And Clark County said, um, he worked in San Diego as Chief Departmental Operations and Election Systems Division for four years, and one year as Assistant ROV. Then he came to Clark County as Assistant ROV. Then in fall of 2024, Eric Brown hired him for our department, for our Elections Department. He's not qualified. He doesn't know, we have no affirmation that he's got election law knowledge, how elections are to be run. This is very complicated. I don't see that he knows anything about the Election Management Guidelines, which is national. I don't see that he's got the prestigious certification with the national certification. There's only one person in, in Nevada that has it. It's the Douglas County Clerk who oversees elections down there. We are tired of chaos in our elections. We want a qualified person. Perhaps you should talk to the Douglas County person. I did see that she got glowing acclamations about how Douglas County ran their 2023 election versus Washoe County, which was chaos, absolute chaos. And now we're paying, we're going to pay two ROVs, because Carrie Ann Burgess is still in the payroll, plus she's filed a lawsuit. We need to get things resolved.
Susie Van Ness.
First of all, I'm not sure if the, all of the citizens have this complaint that Oscar Williams put forward, but they can contact their County Commissioner and get a copy of it, or I can help you get one. There are so many violations from the last election that are provable in this complaint that weren't addressed by Mr. McDonald at all. But what I want to go to is, is the Executive Committee going to appoint someone to come into Washoe County? Now, the executive branch authority to investigate state and local elections is complex, primarily involves several key points. We will have federal oversight. The U.S. Constitution grants primary responsibility for managing elections, but the federal law can oversee certain aspects. The Department of Justice, part of the executive branch, can investigate under federal statutes like voting rights, 1965, which prohibits discriminatory voting practices. The DOJ's Division has specific authority to investigate, enforce federal civil rights laws, including ensuring equal access to the voting process, preventing suppression to the voters, election crimes. The FBI can investigate allegations of federal election crimes, which include voter fraud, if there's evidence that such activities have crossed state lines and involve federal elections. Now, you asked me about the state lines. We are all working together, taking classes, and there's something about social security numbers, which you're going to hear about. And I can't do it in three minutes, but I'd like to tell you more. So we will have an FBI investigation in this county. It's coming. And bottom line is, you need to think carefully. Your names are on here. Everyone that votes for this, your names are on here. Everyone that had to do with the last election and administered it, including Mr. McDonald, their names are on there. So in closing, we all, the citizens, should have been involved and had a advisory board for choosing our next ROV.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looking to the Board to see if there's any additional comments on this item. And I have Commissioner Clark signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had to step off for a moment. Thank you. I would like to ask Commissioner Herman to walk me through the process that she was describing when, when I had to take a moment away from the dais. What process took place? How, I know when you were, one of the meetings you spoke at, you were very excited about the possibility of a new Registrar of Voters that you thought were a great candidate. And now we see that person that you thought was, might be the candidate for Registrar of Voters is not the candidate that's named, you see there. Can you, can you walk us through what took place in, in the meeting since, since we weren't allowed to attend those, please?
Do you want me to start?
At the beginning.
Okay, so the first meeting that we had, and like I said, in the, in the past 10 years, we did it a certain way at the beginning. And so I didn't realize that this was the first time this happened. Okay, so the first meeting we had, I'm just guessing at the number, I was just trying to count the people around the table, maybe nine county employees and myself. And I said, what, well, what, I came here and how did I get the honor of being the only Commissioner here? Because I, you know, I didn't realize that's the way they were doing it. Anyhow, so the first time, we had three, three candidates, one from Chicago. He'd been in the business for quite a long time. And then there was Andrew. And then there was a gentleman by the name of Chris Anderson, and he was from Florida, who had, everybody was pretty excited about him, and we, we voted, you know, 100% for him. He had gotten congressional awards for the way he, the way that he ran the elections in Florida. And I can't remember the name of the county, but, and, and he was, he just had a really good grasp of what we needed, I think, here. Like I said, and, and I know that he wasn't of the same party that a lot of people are looking for somebody in. The second meeting, because, because we all approved of him, he was going to be the one. So then we had another meeting. And something just kind of innuendos were, had come up about something to do with he, he had a legal problem or something. Well, he wasn't the one with the legal problem, but anyhow, it just kind of twisted and turned. And, and before you know it, I was the only one voting for Mr. Anderson, and everyone else had switched over to Andrew. And some of the comments about Andrew on the first meeting, you know, everybody was very impressed with Mr. Anderson. So he, he was kind of considered maybe to be the second place person. And I'm probably leaving a lot of details out, but I, I'm not sure how much information you, you need.
I'm, I'm following you.
Hmm?
I'm following your narrative, yes. Thank you. Continue.
And so that next meeting, then, everybody voted against Mr. Anderson and for Andrew. And even though there had been, you know, questions about his qualifications previous to that. Anyhow, I was the only one that voted for Mr. Anderson then at that meeting. So that's kind of the way it came down.
Could you tell us who else was in the committee, or on the committee, or in the room, or voting for?
Madam Chair, why don't we, why don't we invite HR up? They can explain the process in more detail.
So we can't hear who's in the committee?
I, I'm sure HR will address that. Unless, Vice Chair Herman, do you know the list of folks who are in the committee?
There was a lot of people there. I don't know if I can remember everybody's names.
Is the list available for other Commissioners to review? That's my next question.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Julie Poholke from Human Resources. So through the chair to the Commissioner. I don't have that information with me, but I'd be happy to provide it to you, who was on the panel.
Is that for public consumption? Can anybody see that list?
It's not, it's not public.
Why wouldn't that list be public of a committee that's selecting one of the most important officers in the county?
It's part of our-
And how was that, and the next question is, how was that committee comprised, selected? Who, whom appointed them?
So the second interview committee, the final interview committee consisted of County Manager Brown, and pursuant to the Board of County Commission's policy on how we recruit for a department head that reports to the Board and that the Board selects. There's a Commissioner that's invited to sit on the second interview panel, and at this point, it was Commissioner Herman who participated. We look for subject matter experts. We look for people who are familiar with the position, and we have them on the panel. So I, I want to say there were probably five or six interview panel members.
Did they sign non-disclosures? Could they reveal who they are?
They did.
They did?
They did, signed non-disclosures.
Okay, so did Commissioner Herman violate anything by disclosing that she was on the committee?
You know, I would defer to Mr. Edwards on that. I mean, and I disclosed that County Manager Brown was on the panel.
Yeah, well, you disclosed that. So, you know, is there any legal ramifications of revealing who's behind the curtain? Could you answer that, please, Mr. Edwards?
Which question are you asking? Are you asking if Commissioner Herman violated the policy?
And, and, and the person who revealed Manager Brown's name, did they reveal that?
I, I'm not prepared to reach a conclusion on whether or not there was a violation because of that divulging of information. I think it's probably a little bit less of a concern for a sitting Commissioner and a county manager than it would be for the sort of more rank and file people on the committee. But even if I had an answer right now on that question, I don't think that my analysis would be best suited for the middle of a county commission meeting.
Well, Commissioner Clark, what are you getting at?
So many times when I ask this type of question, I don't expect an immediate response because you haven't had a chance to study it. But those are questions that I like to hear, hear the answer to. What am I getting at, is I think the citizens of this county should have an understanding of who selects the Registrar of Voters. I think, I think-
We have a, we have a policy that this Board has adopted that is public for folks to consume.
Let me finish, please. So, so again, when I hear that it was leaning one way, then it goes another way, and then I hear the, the allegation that it may have been a partisan change of, of heart. And, and I guess the most important thing for me is, we have to look at historically, how many times has somebody who's in a management position gotten it wrong here? I'm looking at a letter here dated back October 4th. When I get a, a letter dated October 4th from the County Manager, Ms. Burgess said, her doctor said she was qualified to come back for work, and, and the manager doesn't. So the, the missteps and the, and the way that this county has a history, a long history of the last four or five years, major elections, national elections, having turmoil in the Registrar of Voters office. Let's do it right once. It's, you know, think twice and cut once, or measure twice and cut once. It just, we continue to be on this vicious cycle of, of this, this happening. I've got another thing that I like to read in the record, and I want to ask if this has been corrected at this point in time. On September 27th, Deputy Registrar of Voters notified the Secretary of State that the voter registration list maintenance had not been completed within the timeframe required by the law, which is contrary to what you reported to the County Management. Of approximately 48,205 address verification cards that were mailed in June of 2024, approximately 28,954 voters who did not return address verification cards were not designated- 28,954 voters who did not return address verification cards were not designated as inactive by statutory deadline. Has that been corrected now, after the election? There's so many times when I ask these questions prior to the election, the constraints of federal law wouldn't allow this to be done, and wouldn't allow that to be done. Now that we're past the election, have these things been done? And that's part of, Mr. McDonald was there in, in the office during that time. Did these things get done that couldn't have been done before? And, and I don't think HR is in a position to answer that. I think Mr. McDonald is in a position to answer that. So those are questions I want to get on the record. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we go back to, we asked HR to give you, give, give the commission an assessment of the process that took place? Because I was a part of the process. I understand Commissioner Herman's comments. But there was a reason why the events that unfolded did so in the manner they did. So could we have Ms. Pahulkey give us a summary?
Yes. As I mentioned, we followed the Board of County Commissioner policy for recruitments that report to the board. We opened the recruitment for six weeks. We had 36 candidates apply. Five candidates met the qualifications for the position and were invited to the first round of interviews pursuant to the policy. One candidate withdrew. The first panel saw four candidates. They recommended three move forward to the final interview, again, where Commissioner Herman was on the panel representing the board. They identified one candidate. They asked for a background investigation to be done. We did two background investigations. And then the holidays came. It was very busy. The panel got together after the holidays and discussed the candidates and identified as, in a consensus of the panel, to move Mr. McDonald forward as the registrar voter candidate.
And I would, I would say, you know, for the future, and if we need to change a policy, this board needs to change a policy. I think that there was a mistake on the management part of not doing background checks prior to interviews. I think that that needs to be looked at, because I think that's where, what I'm hearing from Vice Chair Herman was one of the issues that came up. I think that we're learning these really high-profile positions on a large county that we are, and a swing county, and a swing state, how important it is that we, I, I agree with Commissioner Clark on, yes, we must get it right. I think we did get it right. I think the recommendation today, I feel very strongly to support Mr. McDonald. And I don't think it's fair to say it was a partisan decision when Mr. McDonald has disclosed to this board previously that he is a Republican. So if there's any accusation, one way or another. But I, I do, that, that would be my one, hopefully, opportunity for this, this, this process to be in a little bit of a better place. And I see Ms. Hurley is standing up here. Do you have a response to that, or additional?
I do. So just to give you guys a little history, that policy that appoints department heads come, came to the board in February of 2023. And we are currently in the process of creating a process that will look at when we will do the background checks. But again, we do have to follow law as well. There's only a certain period of time to which you can just do a background check. And so we'll make sure that that fits into our practice, that will go, that will work in conjunction with that policy.
Thank you.
So, and then there was a question as to whether Julie revealing that Manager Brown was on the panel, our process outlines that the county manager and a, and a sitting commissioner will be on that. So she revealed nothing by stating those things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Clark, you're signed in.
Thank you. So I, I'm in the possession of, of an email. I asked the legal department if, if Ms. Burgess, the former registrar of voters, whatever her exact title was, I think interim was the name, interim registrar of voters, if she was still on the payroll. And-
That is not what we're discussing today. Can you get it to the appointment, please?
Let me finish, let me finish, please. It says, "After asking, I can only respond at this time that the county is not commenting on the matter because of workplace investigation is ongoing." So my point is fiscally responsible. Are we going to hire another registrar of voters? Well, we're still paying another registrar of voters. How is that, how is that going to work out? Well, you know, we're all tightening our belts. We've got restraints of expenditures, and yet we can afford to the luxury of having two people being paid for the same job. When the county, if the county didn't have this person on the payroll, the answer would have been no. But not being able to tell me has the appearance that we're still paying somebody to be the registrar of voters. And, and in this day, we're asked to approve somebody else with a very handsome salary increase. So how does that work out? How, how do we explain that to our constituents? How is that good governance? So is the former registrar of voters, and I guess she's not former, if she's still on the payroll, is she on the payroll?
DA Edwards, it looks like you want to-
Yeah, the, the response has already been given to the commissioner on that, which was no comment on that matter, as that's not only an ongoing personnel investigation, but also a pending lawsuit as well. And I'll just add that if, if you appoint someone else permanent registrar of voters today, there's not going to still also be an interim registrar of voters. So what that all means specifically with respect to that situation, that is not something that you guys are deciding today, or something that you're voting on. But there's not going to be a permanent registrar of voters and an interim registrar of voters that's never happened in all the time that I've, that I've been around. I've never seen that happen. I've never seen anybody contemplate that that would happen. So I don't think that's something that, that would factor into what you're deciding here today.
And thank you for the answer. And it's always information I'm looking for. Just get it on the record. And later on, if people ask questions about it, we can refer back to what was asked and what was answered. And, and thank you for doing that. You know, I don't have an axe to grind here. I just want information. Thank you.
Any other board comments before we entertain a motion, looking to the board? I'm not seeing any other. Vice Chair Herman, are you? No?
I've got a final comment, whenever they're done.
All right, Commissioner Clark, final comments.
You know, I'm going to be unable to support the county manager's recommendation to appoint Andrew McDonald as Washoe County Registrar of Voters effective today, with an annual salary of $175,240. Nothing against Mr. McDonald, but I asked Nate Edwards, the DA, if we're still paying Carrie Ann Burgess, and learned that he was unable to answer me because of litigation. So I asked somebody else. I learned Washoe County has been continuing to pay this person since she was placed on medical leave and continued when the county moved her administrative leave, and we're still paying her. As a fiscal conservative, I can't vote on a pay of a new registrar of voters when we're still paying an old interim, old, I didn't mean old, but former interim registrar of voters. If we're going to, if you want to table this and bring this back when we're only paying one ROV, I'd be happy to support Mr. McDonald. Washoe County is facing a $27 million deficit, and, you know, this is just wrong. In addition to that, relying on a, a management that has continued to pick registrar of voters, it's a revolving door. It's a conga line. We can't seem to get it right. I want somebody else to pick. I think, I think the manager's picker is not working right. We've got to get somebody in here who knows how to pick somebody, who can stay and do the task. We've got over 4,000 counties in the United States. Lots of them have registrar of voters. There could be retired people out there. They could be second-in-command at some of these other counties. I'm glad to hear that somebody came in from Florida. We need to get somebody who is subject matter expert, who's been doing this for a long time, not, not somebody who's appointed to the job because somebody likes them. I'm interested in qualifications, not who gets liked. Thank you.
All right. Any other board comments or questions on this item? Commissioner Andriola?
Madam Chair, may I ask HR a question, please?
Of course.
Based on the process that you just outlined, all of the qualifications have been met? Is that correct in terms of the process that all three went through? And certainly now with, with the current recommendation, I just want to make sure that we get on the record that where HR feels in terms of qualifications.
Julie Pahulkey, through the chair to the commissioner. Yes, the candidates that were interviewed did meet the minimum qualifications for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to HR for following the process, to all the folks who sat on the review committee for this. And with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to accept the county manager's recommendation to appoint Andrew McDonald as the Washoe County Registrar of Voters, as outlined in the staff report.
Looking for a second?
Madam Chair, I too would like to thank everyone in the process, and also Mr. McDonald and the entire team, who actually worked through some challenges. And I think your professionalism rose to the top. And I'm just going to be proudly saying not only thank you, but I'm happy to make the second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that? Saying none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes three to two, with Vice Chair Herman and Commissioner Clark in the no. We will now move into item 14.
Item, item 14 is a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit all bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair of the Board to be of critical significance to Washoe County. Pending legislative bills can be located at the state website. Current bills the county is tracking that may be reported on or, or discussed are listed under Government Affairs at the Washoe County website. Due to time constraints inherent in the legislative process, a list of specific bills that staff will seek direction from the commission on during this item will be posted on the website under Government Affairs by 6:00 PM the Friday before the meeting. Due to the rapid pace of the legislative session, additional, additional bills upon which comment may be sought from the Board of Commissioners will be posted as soon as known.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Ms. Matievich, you're between this board and a break on a late lunch, so I'm hoping you're cognizant of that. But we're excited to see you, and thank you for all the work you've already done for this county and this board in Carson. So, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Cadence Matievich, fully cognizant that I stand between you and a much-needed break.
Yes.
So I will try to be brief. We have not identified any specific bills that we are seeking direction on, but I am available to answer any questions that you might have about bills that are on the county bill-tracking site. We are in the second week of the legislative session. They have begun to hear bills as of this week, and so the, the session is well underway. There's been much media coverage that I won't, that I won't belabor, that the budget process for the state has been a little rocky thus far. Some amendments came late last week to the governor's recommended budget. We are still in the process of analyzing that and any potential impacts to Washoe County. We will bring those back to you at a later time, if identified, or as they tie into specific bills. I would note, two bills that are on our tracking list, Senate Bill 65, that is the bill that NACO is sponsoring that has to do with public records of medical examiners. That has not been scheduled for a hearing yet, but we'll be watching that one closely. And then Senate Bill 73, also sponsored by NACO, having to do with signatures of registered voters, and that those signatures be available for inspection at registrar of voters and county clerks, but that copies of those are not provided or made available to the public. So those two bills certainly we're tracking carefully, along with many, many others. And so happy to take any questions from your board, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I was going to ask about the budget, so we'll hear more about that in the coming weeks, I'm sure. But Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? Okay. And Commissioner Garcia? Commissioner Andriola? And Commissioner? There you go. Commissioner Clark? No? Okay, well, thank you. We'll see you at our next board meeting in two weeks, and looking forward to that update.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, we are going to take a half-hour break. We'll be back at 3 o'clock.
Madam Chair, you do have that style, there's action.
Oh. Do you need action?
I don't need any action, but-
Oh, public comment. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Madam Clark?
There is no-
I didn't see any. Thank you. But DA Edwards, keeping me honest. Thank you. Okay, so we will take a half-hour break. We will be back at 3 o'clock to do our public hearings. We're so sorry for the delay in today's agenda. We'll see you soon. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I will call back this Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we will now be heading into our public hearing. Item number 15, Manager Brown.
Item 15 is a public hearing master plan amendment case number WNPA 24.0004, regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA 24-0006, Empire. Consideration of the Planning Commission's recommendation to, number one, adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, High Desert Master Plan Land Use Map to change the master plan land use designation on 11 and 1/2, 11.55 acre parcel, APN 071-120-11, from suburban residential to commercial, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to this effect. And, item two, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment and the finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, recommend adoption of an amendment to the High Desert Regulatory Zone map to change the regulatory zone for an 11.55 acre parcel, APN 071-120-11, from low-density suburban, excuse me, to general commercial, and if approved, authorize the Chair to sign a resolution to this effect. The applicant and property owner is Joseph Rutsky. The subject parcel is located at 7200 State Route 447. The Board of County Commissioners may adopt the proposed amendments, may modify the proposed master plan amendment, and refer the matter back to the Planning Commission for its report in accordance with NRS 278.220, Section 4, or may deny the proposed amendments after the public hearing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could note for the record that Commissioner Garcia is not present, and we'll note it for the record when she does return.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. And thank you, Manager Brown, for that. We will, I would like to see a presentation on that, if that's okay with the board. Great, and looking to staff.
Good afternoon. Julie Olander for the record. With planning and building. Once the, my presentation comes up, I will speak again.
Yes, thank you very much. Josh has got his finger up. Okay, we got a thumbs up? Yeah, there it is.
So this is a request to change the master plan for 11, almost a 12-acre parcel from suburban residential to commercial, and then also to change the regulatory zoning from low-density suburban to general commercial. Parcel's zoned, you can see it's out towards, it's in the Empire area, so you can see on the right-hand side, sort of where it's located along the state route, the state route, and then a closer vision on the left-hand side. And here's a map showing the master plan. On the left, you have the existing, and on the right, you have the proposed. And that one parcel's changing the color from pink to red. And then on the zone change, the same setup, where on the left is existing and on the right is the proposed, so to go to commercial. Currently, the property has been used as a temporary area for renting bicycles, and they have some cargo containers on the property currently. The property owner has cleaned up much of the site, and so it looks a lot better than it previously did. And the owner has been somewhat challenged with removing some of the items on the property, just because of ownership and disposal requirements. Currently, there's no infrastructure, i.e. no power, water, sewer there. The applicant indicates that the, once development occurs, that the infrastructure will be established and will work with the Health Department and sewer, and Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, NEB, to get the sewage on the site. And then also, they have to work with the Nevada State Engineer to get the water rights, for commercial water rights. There was a neighborhood meeting held at Bruno's Country Club, a country club, on August 16, 2024, and about 10 people attended. They had concerns about the maintenance of the site, i.e. the junk that accumulated on the site, that the applicant has indicated they removed quite a bit of that. The timing of the meeting in August with Burning Man event going on, also taking away possible residential zoning that is needed in that area for housing, and then also just, they had questions about what they're going to do on the property itself. Staff did receive one phone call in opposition concerning the residential zone change, and then I believe you all got a letter from a neighboring property that also is opposed to it, that just came in through 311 in the last day or so. The property owners within 2,700 feet were notice of this proposal, and a legal ad was put in the Reno Gazette 10 days before this public hearing. Various agencies have reviewed the application, and their comments are included in the staff report, along with, yeah, just, comments are included in the staff report, and staff can make all the findings as explained in my staff report. And there are possible motions also in your staff report. The applicant's representative is here, and she also has a presentation.
Okay. Would you like to come up and make the presentation?
Anne-Marie Lane for the record. Good afternoon, Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and public participants. As they're pulling that up, today I will introduce the applicant, provide project background, outline the request, and address key insights and concerns. Can we start at the beginning of the presentation?
I think there's a clicker.
Oh, I have the clicker now, sorry.
Oh, no worries. Thank you. And thank you, Josh. Yes.
This is interesting. Is there a button that restarts it at the beginning?
Josh is gonna do it. I think Josh is helping. Oh my gosh. Wow. So prepared.
He's an Eagles fan, Madam Chair.
Nice.
Don't look at her, you're gonna get motion sick.
Right.
Should I go ahead and start? We're trying to figure this out.
That would be great.
Okay. So, my name is Anne-Marie Lane. I'm with Juniper and Sage Consulting, and I am the applicant's representative. Joining me today is the applicant, Mr. Joe Rutsky. Joe is a longtime Nevada resident, UNR graduate, 12-year military veteran with three overseas tours, and a board member of Big Brothers Big Sisters of Northern Nevada. The 11.55 acre subject site is situated five miles south of Gerlach, Nevada, in the Black Rock Desert. It's approximately 90 miles north of Sparks. The subject site is a vacant lot currently devoid of any permanent structures. Before the applicant acquired the property in May of 2023, the subject site was being used as an unpermitted outdoor storage facility. And when the presentation comes up, I'd like to show you some Google imagery from 2019 that shows the amount of stuff that was located on the property. Since taking ownership, the applicant has invested approximately $20,000 in labor, gas, and landfill disposal fees to clean up the site. This investment has facilitated the removal of significant debris, including abandoned trailers, unused equipment, and other waste materials. I do have a satellite image from 2023 that you can compare, and you can see that these efforts have substantially improved the condition of the property. Currently, the applicant is utilizing storage containers.
Looks like it's up.
Ooh. You're my hero.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna run through this. For some reason, it's frozen on this slide. This is the site after it's been cleaned up. Prior, I think in another slide, I have the site on a broader view that shows how much was on there previously. On the northeast section of the property, there are still a few remaining abandoned items, including a derelict bus that the property owner is actively working to remove. The applicant's investment in site cleanup demonstrates the strong commitment to regulatory compliance and property revitalization, reflecting good-faith efforts to enhance the area. To support long-term operations of the seasonal bike rental operation, the property owner has submitted this master plan amendment and regulatory zone request. This aims to eliminate the need for a temporary use permit and aligns the property's use with its commercial potential, enhancing efficiency and contributing to the local economy. The applicant has no other development plans at this time. The applicants are requesting a master plan amendment from suburban residential to commercial, and a regulatory zone amendment from low-density city suburban to a general commercial zoning designation. A zone change request must align with the Washoe County master plan by ensuring that the proposed zoning change supports the community's long-term goals and land use policies outlined in the master plan, and the zone change request must also conform to the regional plan by aligning with broader regional goals and policies, ensuring that the proposed zoning change supports coordinated development across multiple jurisdictions. The subject site has a current master plan designation of suburban residential. The request for commercial master plan designation is consistent with the master plan designations west and south of the subject site. The subject site is currently zoned low-density suburban. The request to amend the regulatory zone to general commercial is consistent with the regulatory zone west and south of the subject site. The low-density city suburban regulatory zone is intended to create and preserve areas where single-family detached homes on one-acre lots are predominant. The general commercial regulatory zone is intended to create and preserve areas that provide the wholesale of goods and retail and personal services. Primary uses allowed include wholesale and retail sales, shopping centers, specialty shops, personal services, et cetera. Examples of uses that would require a special use permit in the general commercial zoning district include construction, sales and services, data centers, major utility services, and major public facilities. Before submitting the application, the applicant attended a pre-application meeting with the county on August 6. The county advised reaching out to the Gerlach General Improvement District for comments and the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency for a preliminary plan review. The Gerlach General Improvement District, located five miles north of the subject site, provides water disposal and sewer services to Gerlach residents. As noted by Gerlach Public Works Supervisor, the GID does not serve the subject parcel and has no position on projects outside its district. Following the meeting with the Gerlach GID, the applicant consulted with Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency, which conducted a preliminary regional plan conformance review. As noted in the staff report, TMRPA identified no conformance issues at this time. In compliance with NRS and Washoe County presupendal requirements, neighborhood meeting notifications were sent to adjacent property owners. A neighborhood meeting was held in August at Bruno's Country Club in Gerlach, Nevada, to inform residents about the proposed request and gather community input. One concern raised during the public engagement process was the timing of the neighborhood meeting, which did coincide with the Burning Man Festival. The scheduling was necessitated by Washoe County's policy of accepting master plan applications just three times a year. Postponing the meeting would have resulted in missing the September supplemental deadline. It was communicated to the public that each master plan amendment application undergoes a thorough review process, including four public hearings with opportunity for public input. To accommodate those unable to attend the neighborhood meeting, the applicant's representative offered individual meetings via email and next door. However, no requests were received as of the application's submittal date. Despite the concerns about the meeting's timing, 23% of the noticed property owners attended, which is a higher-than-average turnout for neighborhood meetings. Public concerns were also raised about the lack of project-specific details on the project. The applicant's representative clarified that a zone change grants a permanent change to the property zoning designation independent of future development plans. Unlike a site-specific process, a zone change provides a broad framework for all permitted uses under that designation, ensuring long-term compatibility regardless of future development changes. Public concerns also addressed the potential for the property to develop a neglected or unkept appearance marked by disarray, litter, and deterioration. There was a general consensus that the increased traffic from tourism has led to an unsightly environment in the area due to the accumulation of discarded and unused items adversely affecting the community's aesthetic appeal and overall quality of life. The applicant's representative did explain that any future proposed development on the subject site would be subject to all county code development requirements, including screening requirements. And in addition, Washoe County has enforcement procedures to handle public new census, which include the presence of debris, litter, garbage, rubble, abandoned or junk vehicles, or junk appliances. A few residents also expressed concern with the reduction in residential land available in the area. To assess the potential impact of the proposed rezon request on the availability of residential land in the independent communities of Gerlach and Empire, the applicant included an acreage analysis in the application's submittal packet. The analysis revealed a total of 96.38 acres of residentially-zoned land within the Empire and Gerlach communities. According to the 2020 census, the total population of Gerlach and Empire was 177 residents. At its peak in the 1950s, the population exceeded 1,000 residents. Today, it is estimated that the number of year-round residents has declined to approximately 100 residents. The applicant's rezon request would result in a reduction of residentially-zoned property in the area by 11.9%. This reduction translates to only 11 potential residential dwelling units, which is minimal given the current demographic trends. Not only has this region experienced a significant decline in population, emphasizing a reduced demand for residential properties, but the local economy is increasingly shifting towards tourism. This transition necessitates a more robust commercial infrastructure to support visitors and enhance economic opportunities. The applicant has obtained two letters of support, including one from the only resident adjacent to the subject site, as shown in the blue arrow south of the subject site. Although a petition was submitted in opposition of this request at the Planning Commission meeting, that was organized by the owner of the commercial properties west of the subject site, which, based on multiple which, based on multiple records request, is operating without the approval of Washoe County Development Department. And this operation has directly contributed to the unsightly appearance that the community has repeatedly voiced concerns over. Washoe County is actively seeking enforcement actions with property owners in the area. Oh, this morning, I was boarded the one public comment that was submitted in opposition to this item. The comment was submitted by a representative of Empire Mining Company, citing concerns that the site will turn into yet another unsightly unkept storage lot. And it is my sincere hope that the actions and efforts of the applicant to clean up the site, as demonstrated in this presentation, and the actions of Washoe County as they enforce actions against property owners in the community who violate the development code, will help address these concerns. According to the Nevada Division of Tourism, the percentage of visitors who traveled to Northern Nevada for the primary purpose of outdoor recreation grew from 3.8% in 2015 to 8% in 2019. This growth in outdoor recreation demand highlights the importance of tourism for local economies in Northern Nevada. Not only has the region experienced a significant decline in population, emphasizing a reduced demand for residential properties, but the local economy is increasingly shifting towards tourism. This request will allow for the development of businesses that align with current trends, fostering local entrepreneurship and economic growth. By providing designated commercial space, the rezon encourages a diverse range of businesses, enhancing accessibility to goods and services for residents and promoting community resilience. The subject parcel is located within a high-desert master plan, which states that there is opportunity to support the development of new commercial services within Gerlach and Empire. Additionally, the plan outlines the current state of commercial services as primarily vacant and highlights the community's desire to enhance future conditions. The plan also states that land use practices and regulations should accommodate the needs of rural communities and changing trends regarding businesses. This request not only accommodates existing rural needs, but also anticipates future growth and opportunities, ensuring that land use practices remain responsive to the dynamic landscape of rural communities. Additionally, the plan encourages support of visual improvements to enhance community gateways. The applicant's efforts to improve the site by removing junk and debris directly support the policy of enhancing community gateways. By rezoning the property to general commercial, the owner is taking proactive steps to mitigate the negative impacts associated with vacant or poorly maintained land. Lastly, the plan encourages engagement with the residents of the community to ensure development is consistent with community's unique needs. By enhancing the site's condition, the owner not only demonstrates a commitment to improving the property, but also creates a more attractive environment for future commercial services. This item was heard at the Planning Commission public hearing on December 3, 2024, where the commission unanimously approved a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the master plan amendment and zone change. Should the board approve the master plan amendment and zone change, this item will go to TMRPA for a master plan conformance review prior to formal adoption. In summary, approval of this request aligns with the community's vision for visual improvements and increased commercial services, fostering a vibrant and well-maintained gateway that reflects the area's character and encourages economic activity. Ultimately, the rezon request is a crucial step in establishing standards that prioritize community aesthetics and enhance the overall quality of the area. As evidenced throughout this presentation, the requested amendments are consistent with the governing approval. Therefore, and on behalf of the applicant, we respectfully request Washoe County Board of County Commissioners to approve this request. I'd like to take a brief moment to thank Washoe County planning staff, Mrs. Julie Olander, for her excellent professionalism and communication throughout this process. Her dedication and thorough review of the request has made this process much smoother, and it is truly appreciated. I'd also like to thank the board for your time. If you have any questions for me or the applicant, we'd be happy to address those. Thank you.
Thank you. I now look to the board for any conversation before we take public comment. Are there any comments? I'm not seeing any. Okay, Madam Clerk, public comment.
Yes, my name is Keith DeForest, and I've been out in Gerlach. We've been over there for over 30 years. My parents have the property there in Empire. She did give a consent letter until they found out they're trying to do a commercial well. And they're also trying to amend the high-desert plan. These are people in Gerlach that have signed to try to help protect the residential lots that we're trying to save, because we have no residential to speak of really in Empire at all. There is some in Gerlach. So, the high-desert plan is amended, which helps protect the small communities in Gerlach and like Gerlach. So, if they drill a commercial well there, there's a good chance of them draining my mother's well. And she's the only one that has a home there in Empire. So, we're trying to stop that, because we don't want my mom to run out of water. We have the high-desert plan, the residential, the water, and the highway department, because we've had a lot of issues during Burning Man with the highway and traffic control. And that section of highway is a very big issue with traffic and the highway department. So, with them things there, them four things, I would like you guys to consider more research done on the water rights, because we don't know if the water's even there to do a commercial wells. Amending the high-desert plan does not help Gerlach or Empire. I don't believe it helps them. I believe it helps somebody, well, Burning Man and stuff, and not the citizens of Gerlach. We have no employees. We have no housing. So, we're trying to save it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have that email that was referenced that I will place on the record.
Okay, thank you very much. I look to the board. I'll start with Vice Chair Herman. Comments or questions for staff? No. And Commissioner Garcia, no. And Commissioner Andrea.
Could we ask Ms. Olander if you can come up?
Julie Olander for the record.
Thanks. Could you take us through the process in terms of, in the event that a commercial well would be requested by the applicant, and what that process would look like? If, in fact, they did decide they wanted to do that? This is not part of the application that I'm aware of. So, just kind of two questions. Process and is there a commercial well as part of this?
So, I should say again, Julie Olander for the record, excuse me. So, that is all managed through the state through Net Water Resources. So, they'll have to move through Water Resources to get the water rights and to get commercial water rights. And as you have indicated, that's not something we see here at the county level. And they will also confirm that the water rights will not impact neighboring water rights. That's part of their due diligence.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Make sure my mic is on. Mr. DeForest, was he... Did we have it available today for Gerlach residents to zoom in to this meeting? Or did they have to drive in? I think that in the past, we've tried to make public comment available, but just wondering if anybody else from Gerlach wanted to opine on this matter? And did they all have to drive in if they did? Or was public comment available through the... online, through Zoom? That was my only question.
I think we have public comment on Zoom.
Public comment was available this morning for the first public comment and for this item, and nobody showed up.
But...
In the library.
If anybody wanted to comment now, though, is it available now? If... I see one person drove in. I'm just asking about the process is all. If somebody, in the future, if we have a county commission meeting and involves anything to do with Gerlach, and it isn't just morning or afternoon public comment, are people able to tell us their feelings via Zoom?
Yes, as it states on the cover of the agenda.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, no other comments from the board? Okay, well, if there's no other comments from the board, I am looking for a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve with all of the conditions that were outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, and I think it's adopted. I'm sorry to... Is that okay? I'll second it with that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is a public hearing. We have taken public comment. Any questions from the board on this? Seeing none. Yes, Commissioner Clark?
A quick question for Commissioner Vice Chair Herman, if she had any comments about this. It's her district.
It seemed like there was a worry about a commercial well, but it looks like with the state involved, it's going to be quite a process to get a commercial well there. So, I think that that's kind of softened. So, thank you.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, you've got the opportunity to vote on your screen. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We are now going to move into Item 16. Manager Brown.
Item 16 is a public hearing, appeal of the Washoe County Board of Adjustments, denial of special use permit case number WSUP 24-0015, Brian Canyon grading for major grading resulting in up to six acres of land disturbance. 14,754 cubic yards of cut and 14,753 cubic yards of fill to create a dam structure to build upon and rectify past illegal grading. The appellant and property owner is SC Advisors LLC. The subject parcel is located at Zero Brian Canyon Road, APN 055-301-38, has a master plan designation of rural... rural? Can't say that word. And a regulatory zone designation of general rural. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record on appeal and any additional evidence submitted at the board's public hearing. The board may affirm, modify, or reverse the Board of Adjustment's decision. If the board reverses the Board of Adjustment's decision, the board may remand the matter back to the Board of Adjustment or directly grant the special use permit.
Thank you very much, Manager Brown. The way we'll do this is we'll have a staff presentation, and then we will hear from the appellant. We'll have a conversation amongst the board and questions, and we'll take public comment, because this is a public hearing. So, we'll start with the staff.
Okay, good afternoon. Courtney Reiki, Senior Planner with Washoe County Planning. As Manager Brown stated, this item before you is an appeal of the Board of Adjustments denial for WSUP 24-0015 for Brian Canyon grading. The subject parcel is 346.48 acres and located at Zero Brian Canyon Road in the South Valleys Planning Area, west of Highway 395 and south of Front Town Road. The parcel has a regulatory zone of general rural and is mostly undeveloped with some dirt and gravel, gravel access roads, a partially graded pond, which is the subject of this request, and wells. A little bit of background into the unpermitted grading. The application is in response to a code enforcement violation from 2020 for unpermitted grading. The applicant subsequently submitted a special use permit application, WSUP 21-0024, to resolve the unpermitted grading at that time. At the October 7, 2021 Board of Adjustment public hearing, the requested special use permit was denied. In March of 2023, code enforcement staff issued an administrative penalty notice. In response, the property owner submitted a new special use permit application with nearly half the amount of grading and substantially smaller size of the pond from their original request. And that is the matter before the board today. Approval of the special use permit would allow Washoe County to impose the appropriate conditions for the applicant, or rather, the appellant, to resolve the code violation and bring the property into conformance with code requirements for the previously disturbed portion of the property. If the applicant is unable to obtain approval of a special use permit, then there will be no immediate compliance option available to code enforcement. And the existing grading and pound impoundment for water, which is not currently engineered, would likely continue to exist for some period of time. The only remaining compliance options at that point would be county-initiated abatement at county expense or for the property owner to do a series of smaller grading remediation projects that would not trigger a special use permit. Either of these alternative remedies could take years to remedy a code enforcement case that has been open and unresolved since August of 2020. And above here is the site plan. Approval of the special use permit would allow the property owner to have a pond that would be appropriately engineered, making it safer, and remediate roughly 80% of the past grading with about 20% remaining for the actual impoundment of water for the pond. See, here's the area of disturbance. The applicant is proposing up to six acres of ground disturbance for a one-acre pond that would have cuts up to 16 feet and fill up to 16 feet to even out the pond bed and adequately contain the water. The maximum depth of the pond is eight feet and impounds 4.99 acre-feet of water at the maximum water elevation. The owner has identified a pertinent water rights that they propose to utilize for this pond. Water right change applications must be approved by the Nevada Division of Water Resources for these water rights to be usable for this pond. While a state dam permit is no longer triggered due to the reduced scope from the previous special use permit, engineering's conditions of approvals reflect many of the same conditions that otherwise would have been required by the state. The applicant has agreed to all proposed conditions of approval. On December 5 of 2024, staff recommended approval of the special use permit for the reasons discussed in Attachment C of your board packet, which was the Board of Adjustment staff report. And the Board of Adjustment did deny the subject special use permit following a motion to approve that failed to receive a majority vote. The decision was two in favor and three opposed. Ultimately, the motion to approve failed and therefore was a technical denial. All applicable agencies reviewed the request and provided no opposition. Recommended conditions of approval were incorporated appropriately. Four individuals submitted multiple comments prior to both the Board of Adjustment public hearing as well as today's appeal hearing. Commenters predominantly cited concerns with the adequacy of the dam structure and potential flooding, as well as confusion over the applicability of the previously denied special use permit and code enforcement passed actions. Staff has corresponded, both verbally and in writing, and those responses were included in your packet as Exhibit B. With the inclusion of the conditions of approval that were presented to the Board of Adjustment, ensuring the property is restored in compliance with all requirements and safety improvements, staff does believe that all required findings can be made. Staff has provided rationale for each of the findings above in the Board of Adjustment staff report included as Attachment C. The board has three options available to them today. One, affirm the Board of Adjustment's decision and deny WSUP 24-0015. Or two, reverse the Board of Adjustment's decision and approve the SUP, subject to the conditions of approval attached to the original staff report as presented to the Board of Adjustment. Or three, reverse the Board of Adjustment's decision and remand the matter to the Board of Adjustment with instructions. I do want to note, while the recommendations in the staff... to note, while the recommendations in the staff report are accurate, the actual motion before you, should you choose Option Two, to please include "subject to the conditions of approval," and that it would not just be outright approving the SUP, but to make sure we reference those conditions of approval, because those are important. With that, it concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and we have county staff representing various departments if you have specific questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for staff before we hear from the appellant? I'm not seeing any. And Madam Clerk, before the appellant comes up, we could do the timer for that as well. And looking for the appellant to proceed.
Hi, Greg Steph here with RCI in Carson City. Thank you for your time, Board, and thank you for staff time. So we're here to appeal the decision of the Board of Adjustment. I think there are a couple of things that probably were not really considered in that meeting. First off, is the conditions of approval really address the potential safety issues by requiring, you know, a breach analysis, peer review, an O&amp;M plan, like Courtney said, a majority of the things that the state would ask for if it was under their jurisdiction. So the jurisdiction for the state is twenty feet high and twenty acre feet of impoundment. We're well below both of those criteria. Another thing to mention is that there's only two ways that water's going to make it into the pond. One is rainfall that falls into it and the wells that will provide water to it. There is a creek up there, but we don't affect the creek. We don't divert water from it. We don't touch it. Pretty much, it all goes around us. A couple of notes here. Oh, wait, Courtney, where's? Oh, it's right here. So, just wanted to touch on some of the conditions of approval. So there needs to be an O&amp;M plan, and that's general condition number three, and that discusses, you know, annual maintenance and things such as that, operation of the pumps and all that. Emergency action plan, that's dam safety condition one, an inspection program. Three and four kind of go together as far as inspection, breach analysis, decommissioning plan if it ever happens, peer review of the plans, seismologic analysis and financial assurance. Those are all in the conditions of approval. The other thing I wanted to mention is that approval of the special use permit does not mean that my client gets to go out and start turning dirt tomorrow. We still have to go through site improvement plans with the county and have the proper review before any work can be done. And the review will ensure compliance with all the conditions of approval. So that's pretty much my presentation.
Thank you. Looking to the board to see if there's questions for the appellant right now. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you know, we're all in tune with fire, all the recent fires we've had in this part of the West Coast. Will helicopters be able to dip into this if this pond was full to help with taking buckets of water out with helicopters? Is that, could that be done? Is that anything that could help the community with that?
Sorry. I'm not a pilot, but I believe that they should be able to dip some water out of that for firefighting. One thing I will add, if I may, is that part of the design process is determining how we're going to provide power to the pumps. The wells are already there. Pumps are already in the wells. But I think to date, if they need to use those pumps, they have to bring up a gen set, a generator, to run those. But we'll talk about doing something more reliable, more permanent for the project and have it be part of the improvement plans. But yes, to answer your question, they should be able to. But like I said, I'm not a pilot, so I couldn't tell you for sure.
Just a question. Fire is top of mind awareness for lots of us that live out in the Washoe Valley. And, you know, any more resources to water, the faster the better, the closer the better, could help in the future.
I could certainly appreciate that. My grandfather's home in Altadena was lost in the heat and fire. So, I get it.
Very good. Thank you.
And Commissioner Andreola, do you have anything? Okay. And Commissioner Garcia and Vice Chair Herman, do you have any questions for the appellant?
Okay, so is there a home involved with this pond?
No, Commissioner.
Just, what's the purpose of it?
My client just wants to be able to use his property, and he wanted to have a pond up there for fishing, other recreation. There's, you know, it could also provide some water for wildlife up there. If he ever decided he wanted to put a structure up there, then he would have to go through the appropriate permitting process to get a building permit. So granting this grading permit, or I should say, this special use permit, which is not a grading permit, does not automatically allow him to build structures up there that wouldn't necessarily be permitted at any other piece of property.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's a tough decision that the board has put in when the work, a lot of the work has already started and we're now going backwards. So, and certainly put the neighborhood in a difficult situation with the applicant and appellant. So I don't know if you want to address that at all?
Thank you. I can, to a point. I've only been involved in this project for probably about the last eight months or so. So I don't, all I have for history is some of the documentation, talking to planning. I've actually talked planning quite a few times on this project since I was assigned it. Part of this project is actually restoring all of the grading that was done outside of the footprint of the pond that we're asking for. That includes a revegetation plan, getting the vegetation reestablished in there for many reasons. One is it holds the soil together and helps to mitigate erosion. Couple other things. So there's a revege plan. The other is, one of the conditions is actually lining the pond, which would take care of any seepage issues. So there's a lot of safety features that are built in to the conditions of approval that will make this as safe as it could be.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. If there are no other questions from the commissioners, we'll open it up to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First up, we have Stan Haskell, followed by Rod Smith.
It's not going to show it.
You can scoot it over.
Like sideways? This part here. Yeah. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, because I can't hear you. My name is Stan Haskell. I live at 7465 Brian Canyon Road, and I am disapproving of this project for more than obvious reasons. Mr. Hurry currently has easement through my land, and I have two roads crossing Brian Canyon Creek, one here and one down here. Okay? And it has culvert pipes that barely drain water through a heavy rainstorm, barely. So it's, they were poorly engineered to begin with. Nobody will be watching this proposed pond in the winter and most of the summer. With that said, because levees and dams break all the time, with the best of engineering, if a breach occurs, a large volume of water collecting speed, picking up sand, rocks, and debris will take out my two roads crossing the creek and ending up in the community below. The storm in 2017 proved this has a lot of rock and debris came through when the road caved in, just from a rainstorm. Okay? Now, there are four parties connected with this proposed project. Mr. Hurry, who will be funding it, RCI, who will be engineering it, and a contractor who will be building it. And most important at this stage is the committee that approves it. All pointing fingers at each other should something go drastically wrong. With all this being said, we look at this committee to protect our safety and our environment. Nobody has addressed this in the previous hearings, but my question for you today, and because you've heard all the public outcry, the question might be for Mr. Edwards, sitting over here. This proposal seems to be getting a lot of consideration, but the question must go on record. Will you assume your portion of the liability for this project if water gets loose up there and does what I just read?
He can't answer you, but we...
And I understand that, but it has to go on record, that you've heard it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Rod Smith, followed by Sharon Smith, and I will distribute documents for Mr. Smith.
My name is Rod Smith. I live in the next door neighbor to him, one house down from the potential of problems. So it put us right there. Oh, well, forget it. This is what we're really concerned about. This was from one rainstorm in 2017, and this is his road that goes up to the property we're talking about. And it's hard to see, but those are two people standing down there. That's more than six feet deep and six feet wide, one rainstorm. And that's going to happen again. Now, how does he get up there to protect his equipment during these periods? You can't get up there in the wintertime, or you could today, but normal winter, this would be impassable. And so you've got a pond with pumps, potential for a fire using diesel, lots of problems with regards to what could happen. Now, it's all could, but if it does, we're in deep trouble. And this has not been considered, because if you read the rules, regulations, there's four things that have to be done before you can approve the project. And I know you know all these: consistency, improvement, site suitability, issue not detrimental and effective military installation. This has already been turned down twice, and here we are again. And the county, I believe there's a problem with both what's been said and what the county says. This is a response to those four items that are required, that you need to approve. And they're dead exactly what the code says. No clarification, no nothing, just reiterating them. To me, that's not acceptable. This is an unmanned pond, no controls, wintertime, lots of control, lots of problems. One acre, six feet deep, yeah, one bucket of water by a helicopter, maybe. Does he have the water? Maybe. He has to get a okay to get the water, because it was designed for irrigation. Now, he probably can get it, but if he can't, there's not even enough water to fill the pond. And there's three feet of evaporation on Lake Tahoe, so you can expect three feet of evaporation here. This is only a six-foot-deep pond, as a state. That means the water's going to evaporate every year. And we're trying to protect ourselves, our water in the state, and here we are pumping water out of the ground to let it evaporate. Now, what sense is that? Doesn't make any sense at all. This water eventually is going to work its way down to the highway, and it's going to wipe out the highway. Has anybody thought about that? All the crossings on this are made out of thirty-inch pipe, never expecting that much water up there. So I think a lot of things need to be thought about even before this is even considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Smith, and I will distribute her documents. And after Sharon is John Carey.
There's the site, by the way. That's three thousand feet, six hundred feet high.
My name is Sharon Smith, and I've lived at 7450 Brian Canyon since 2002, downstream of the proposed dam and pond. I stood in front of the Board of Adjustment at the October 21st meeting, hearing where Mr. Hurry requested a special permit to build a pond with non-engineered earth and dam so his sons could fish in it. We noticed the heavy equipment going by our house and found out that he had not permitted any building, and the county shut him down. And then at the October 21st meeting, this neighborhood, we brought to the attention of your Board of Adjustment, that he had dug a hole, built a dam without any permits. The board listened to us, and they denied his special use permit and ruled, I was there, and said that he had to grade it back to the natural state that he had founded in and replant it with natural vegetation. Now, we stand here today, and it hasn't been touched. Months later, we held a neighborhood meeting at his request, and a new engineer and his representative told us what they wanted to do this time around. When it was pointed out by us in the neighborhood that their calculations and facts were not correct, they never, they went away. Then, in November 24th, we're issued again against the, back to the Board of Adjustments, which in my opinion, after listening to all the things I've heard here, has no bite in their bark, or whatever you want to say, because he has not done anything to go into what they asked him to. They denied him at the November 24th meeting. Now, we're here again. We've seen that nothing has been done. We've lived with water. We've lived with rain. We've lived with snow. But if you approve this, you're going to put a man-made disaster waiting to happen above our homes. So it's up to you. And I can tell you from what we've noticed in the neighborhood, you give him permission for a one-acre pond, two or three years later, it's going to be a six or a 10-acre pond. And it'll be up to you to monitor it, and we know that's not going to happen. So I hope you will vote to deny it and protect our homes from a potential man-made disaster. And thank you for listening.
Thank you. John Carey?
For the record, John Carey at 7335 Franktown Road. Very quickly, noticed for the permit, it's talking about utilities. He needs utilities in order to keep the pond refreshed. You can't use solar, because there is no house up there. Certainly can't use diesel, because there's no supervision up there. So you would have to take electricity three thousand feet up with a 600-foot elevation. Now, certainly that can be done if the power is available. And I'm not sure where that power actually would be coming from. So it could be much, you might have to go all the way down to Franktown to find that electricity. And the other thing is liability. The county wants indemnification of liability. So if there is an issue, who is going to? The county wants indemnification of liability, so if there is an issue, who is going to have the liability on that issue? Hurry. Will he have, you know, I mean, if he wipes out three houses, that's $10 million. I think he should have an insurance policy if he is approved for this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have an email that was submitted for the record.
Thank you very much. I'll turn it back to the board. Commissioner Clark, do you have any comments and questions?
No comments, thank you.
And Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a couple questions for staff. So I'm not sure who the appropriate person is, but I wanted to just go through the report just for full transparency. I have watched the meetings and read all this. Mr. Smith has been really generous with his time. I'm sure he loves when I call him. I think he probably, he goes to the hallway looks just to see if I'm there, because I sometimes catch him in the hallway like I've done. My question is related to the fact that the Engineering and Capital Projects document that you, or was submitted with the packet, includes a lot of provisions. Throughout the entire document, it referred, well, through most of the document refers to the word "dam." And I'm wondering if you can talk to what the requirements are in terms of, not necessarily, I think it's been clear that it's moved from dam to pond, but the requirements for a dam have additional oversight, and I wonder if you could speak to that, because that same oversight, as it goes through the process, applies to this pond. And I just think that's important to talk about. So I may have a couple more questions.
Good afternoon. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects, and I also serve as your county engineer. I think this particular project represents a little bit of a unique approach. While we clearly understand and work consistently with the State and Nevada Dam Safety Group for the permitting of dams, as the applicant's representative indicated very accurately, that the trigger for a dam under the NRS definition is 20-acre feet of containment or 20 feet elevation of embankment. This pond with the associated berms don't meet that threshold. That wasn't the case when it first came in after the illegal grading activities were identified. It was a much larger facility, and at that time, that was the approach, directing the applicant to work with State Dam Safety to meet all of those requirements. What they've come in with now is an application for something that's much smaller, but we, looking at the location, needing to understand the impacts and wanting to assure the community that's below that they are in the same consideration as we would have if it was a dam, we've applied basically those same requirements from State Dam Safety for this particular grading S U P moving forward. That's done with that purpose, to make sure that the community is safe, to understand what the potential impacted areas would be through an inundation or a breach analysis, I think you've heard both of those terms, and to make sure that the construction work to bring this embankment to a safe condition is both designed by a professional engineer with the ability to do that and inspected during construction. Now, that gets us to the place of where it's constructed, but it's very important to recognize that also included with the engineering recommendations, the requirements, I should say, is that there has to be regular inspections and submitted to Washoe County Engineering for conformance of what those requirements are. So this is applying a much higher level of requirement, a much higher level of condition for this particular project. Quite honestly, I thought maybe the applicant would push back, but the applicant didn't push back. They've accepted all of the conditions that you see from engineering, from our department. So I hope that maybe answers some of the questions. I'm happy to dive into the details with you if that would be helpful.
I'm good. I also, thank you, I also would ask if you could just maybe step back and go all the way to the point of essentially why we're here, because this application is not approving the pond. This application is necessary, is my understanding, and I'm just asking for confirmation, in order to actually put the illegal grading and give the authority, if you will, of putting it back to where it would be if, in fact, the pond is approved in a whole separate process. So by denying this would not allow an opportunity for the grading to be restored, and that may explain why the grading has not been put back into, from the history that was provided not only to us, but was also reiterated by public comment, that there was a condition evidently that asked that the grading be put back to its original state when it was denied, with all the landscaping essentially put back into its original state. And that didn't happen. But it's my understanding, and that's what I'm asking you to clarify, is that in order to actually have the owner put this back, the grading, the illegal grading that occurred, gives an opportunity for the grading to be put with the intent of the pond, the smaller pond, the one acre versus the 20, but not giving approval for the actual pond to be put in, essentially, because it has to go through the entire process, including the high level of oversight to the dam point that you just spoke about, right? So I'm just wanting to get that clear clarification on why, what is really before us today in terms of what was denied? Because when I watch the Board of Adjustment, I just wanted to kind of use this opportunity to clear up what seemed to be, it just, I don't know if it was clear or not, I don't know what goes through people's minds, but in my understanding, this is going to allow for it to be put back with the smaller pond. If the pond is not approved, for whatever reason, if the pond stops through the process, for whatever reason, compliance issue, whatever, then the applicant would have to put the, regrade essentially, to get it back to its natural state, and I just, I'm not clear. So I'm asking for clarification on why we are having to go through an approval process for illegal grading, for the pond, for the one acre, and then if the pond doesn't happen, what happens to the grading? So there's several questions in there, and I hope that I'm clear in what I'm asking for you to share.
Commissioner, through the chair, I believe I understand, but if I don't answer all your questions, please stop me. Let me start with the requirement that any grading activity requires a permit. This particular project, and this is not unique, we see this, and in my tenure have seen illegal grading activities around the county, and in this particular case, like many others, the volume of grading exceeds those thresholds and requires the special use permit process. So from step number one, they've made a faux pas. They've made a mistake, and they've illegally graded. To restore that back to the original condition would require a permit as well, because they're in essence taking that material that's been moved, a changed condition, and creating another changed condition. So that permit is really important to even restore back to original condition. Is that clear?
It is.
And I'm just gonna kind of keep stepping through.
Keep on going, yep, thank you.
If the applicant had asked for, so the applicant is asking for grading to do two things, the special use permit grading. It's to create a much smaller impoundment with a smaller embankment and to revegetate or restore about 60% of the disturbed area. That's what the special use permit is in front of us. Now, if the applicant chose and said, you know, I just want to restore this back to the original condition, and I don't want to pursue any project, they would still have to have a permit to restore it back to that original condition. The third approach might be if the applicant simply said, I don't want to work with the county, and I think Courtney accurately identified it in her slide, that the last option would be abatement, where the county would enter the site with court approval and perform work to restore back to the original condition. Our approach is to work with applicants, to work with the property owners. As they move through their projects, I think they realize there's a problem, there was a mistake. They're trying to rectify that mistake by conforming to Washoe County Development Code and grading permit requirements through this special use permit. That's what we've been working with the applicant over the last number of months on this special use permit for grading that's in front of you today. That makes sense, right? To take a situation where they're out of conformance and bring it into conformance, and at the same time, realize that goal, that what they want to do with their property as property owners and exercising those property rights. So what our job is to do is to make sure as they go through this process that we apply the appropriate conditions to make sure they're in conformance with those requirements. The second part of your question was, is, yes, you're absolutely right, this is not the final step. There is a series of conditions. I'm holding the engineering condition component. I think the applicant had a single slide that referenced many of those conditions that engineering has placed on this. So those are all activities that have to be performed prior to the approval for any additional action moving forward. I need to see an inundation study. I need to understand what this might do to the downstream properties below. I recognize that this is only five acres of water. That's about 1.6 million gallons. That's about a third of the volume that you see sitting in a water tank up on the hill in one of Tom Waugh's water tanks, right? So even though it's a small volume of water, we still have an obligation and still want to make sure that those requirements conform to Washoe County Development Code and to these additional requirements that we've placed on the applicant. So part of that is to, again, make sure that that inundation study, that H and H work, that hydraulics and hydrology is done, to understand what the potential impacts would be as that potential breach occurred and the water flowed down through the natural drainages. If there's a problem, obviously, I'm not going to allow that to move forward. There'd have to be some type of mitigation to address that condition. That would come as we receive the engineering reports, the hydrology reports, the inundation work. So I want to give you that assurance as well, to make sure that this is not a, we have a lot of control and oversight through this process. I hope that helps answer some of those questions you have, and I'm certainly, again, want to go into the details with you if it's helpful.
Thanks. May I have a follow-up, please?
Yes, of course.
In terms of the neighbors, all of the information obviously is available to anyone, not just the neighbors, as this process goes through, at any time, for any process, for any application, or any building or anything, there's always a public records request. But the inundation study, in terms of the complexity and the importance of how that is going to be measured with the comments of concern of neighbors with the possibility of a possible failure, and having that directly impact their residents, or other things that might occur if, in fact, there were a failure. And I wonder if there's an opportunity to consider at least giving those neighbors that opportunity, because as you're going through, they don't know when things get done. You just don't know when things get done. It's just the nature of how things work. Even if I were to ask you, when is that study gonna happen, I'm not really sure that you can actually tell me exactly when that's gonna happen. But the neighbors following up and giving an opportunity to understand the technical details of this, if, in fact, it does prove that it is safe, that they have an opportunity to ask questions if they'd like, or get additional information. I've spent many meetings with you and constituents, and you've been really, really great, even in Hidden Valley when that happened, totally, of trying to provide residents with information and having them have an opportunity for questions. So I would just throw that out as a request to be available and to, also to the neighbors that they can submit for that, so that they can have an opportunity to review the technical parts. So I just, I wanted to just, you know, get that out there, that there's that opportunity for that discussion and sharing of technical information.
Through the chair to the commissioner, I appreciate the sensitivity, particularly to this project, and am happy to, not as a direction, but happy to involve and share that outcome of that inundation study and our review process as we move forward. That is something that I'd be absolutely willing to do.
In terms of the, one of the public commenters just made a statement, so I'm just paraphrasing, of that one-acre pond may turn into a 10-acre pond. I mean, what assurance is there that that won't happen? I mean, I know that, I'm not, that's a little bit of an unfair question in the sense of you can't predict what people will do, but we, in terms of Washoe County, have enforcement, and we have regulations and compliance, and we have to follow that. So it's my understanding that the provisions, and I've read this, require that if, in fact, this did go through, meaning the whole process, not what's before us today, because that's a whole process that it has to go through, that the owner is required on an annual basis to provide an engineering report, and if, in fact, that engineering report proves of concern or out of compliance that Washoe County has recourse? And I wonder if you could speak to that?
Yes, again, through the chair to the commissioner, I want to add a little bit to what you were just saying. We thought about this. And so included in the engineering conditions is also the requirement to provide access to Washoe County or its authorized staff or consultants to access the dam, pond, well, water diversion system, inlet-outlet infrastructure, any other areas to the operation and stability of the dam, I'll refer to as embankment. So we thought about that. So not only is it a condition to report, but we also are asking, requiring, the ability to enter the site. And so this is in alignment with what you're bringing to light as an assurance. You're absolutely right. I can't control individual property owners. But I can, through the processes that we've put in place, help mitigate those potentials. If that did happen to occur, obviously, there would be another series of processes that we would go through. I can't tell you exactly what that condition would look like, but I can assure you that what we've included in our engineering requirements will help mitigate those potential issues.
Well, and I would just like to state that I think it is concerning that a grading, the grading was done to the extent it was done out of compliance, and I think that that is not to be taken lightly, if that's the first course of creating a relationship with Washoe County. And I believe that there is zero room for any out of compliance moving forward. I do want to say the level, the heightened level of requirements is not necessarily, I don't want to... I don't want it to be sounding in a retaliatory way, but the concern from a technical standpoint, and what you've put in here, I believe, is very measured. It's very measured. And, I just feel that the owner doesn't have any room for a misstep, if that's how you're starting out. We're talking a significant amount of grading that had been done, a significant amount of a plan without having a permit. Things do happen. I'm not trying to be accusatory. It's just very surprising, just the level of investment, of dollar, of having someone come out, is also significant. And so, it's very surprising to have learned that that's how the whole project started. And I think the neighbors are right to be concerned. I think the liability piece is of concern, that your careful, measured, technical way of moving forward, and if it does fail, the county has exposure if it's not done exactly as it should be. But, I also want to share that the level of what is in your report also has this... There's no time that ends on this. So, if in five years, as an example, I'm just using, if in five years, that one turns to a 10-acre, doesn't matter if it's five years, 10 years, or after it's approved, they're out of compliance. And I really believe that putting in and not having an end date for that is really critical to ensure, whether it's the neighbors that are currently here, or the neighbors in the future, that are not, don't have any exposure, period. Because you don't know. We don't know what the big plans are, but there were big plans, or the grading wouldn't have occurred the way it did. So, I have major concerns, and I think that putting in all protection we can, but I do want to go back full circle. We, meaning what's before us, is to actually get the grading back. It's not to approve the pond. So, I just want to reiterate that point.
Thank you. And, do we need staff? It looks like staff wants to pipe in.
Yeah, do you have any additional follow-up?
Yeah, again, through the chair to the commissioner, I just want to be clear that this special use grading permit is to allow for the construction of the 1-acre pond, and to revegetate the disturbed areas that were part of the original illegal grading operation. So, this special use permit, if approved, will then take the next step of going into the design, into the inundation studies, into those pieces, before the next step of permitting, et cetera. So, I think as the applicant's representative has very clearly stated, this is not the only step in the process. But, this special use permit for grading before you is to create that outcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the revegetation aspect. Did I hear you correctly in saying that only 60% of the area that was illegally graded will be revegetated?
I don't know the detail.
Courtney Wyke, for the record, can you please repeat that? I was trying to look something else up.
That's okay. In Mr. Smith's comments, I think I heard him say 60% of the area that was illegally graded would be rehabbed with new vegetation.
Correct. I don't have that percentage right in front of me.
That's okay. My question is, why isn't it not 100%?
Because the remaining portion would be for the pond and any of the other components to keep the pond.
Okay. So, the surface area that includes a pond, obviously, is not eligible for that. But, the remaining scar that's essentially on the earth will be put back to the way it was prior to this?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
If I may, Courtney Wyke, for the record, I just want to make it clear that a pond is not a use type, and it's not the pond that actually is triggering the special use permit.
It's the grading.
It's the grading, right? Just want to make sure that that's clear. You can have a pond, it's just of this magnitude that triggered the special use permit for grading.
I love that you brought that up, and I'm sorry, really quick. It's very strange to just have a pond and no...
Structure.
Yes, it feels like an accessory use to me, if I was putting on a planner hat. And so, I... How often do we... Just, this is a very strange and somewhat upsetting because of all the work that had already been done, and obviously, creating problems with neighbors and the county. Is this something that has happened in the county before? I'm not saying the history of the county, but that you've seen, or even Mr. Smith?
I may defer to Mr. Smith, but I can understand that. But, when I first got assigned this, I did look into whether or not, can a pond be kind of a primary use? And essentially, a pond could. You could have a pond on a vacant piece of property. It's the commercial use of a pond, say, like a ski lake or something, or you're bringing people onsite, that would trigger, you know, that would go above where it would be actually considered a use type. And as far as whether or not historically this has occurred, I don't know that I could speak to that.
Okay. It's looking like Mr. Smith's not thinking of anything.
Yes, again, to the chair, to your question, I don't recall immediately any other project where just a 1-acre surface area pond was created on a vacant parcel. I'm trying to recall.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia, you were in the middle of questioning.
No, that was... Sorry, thank you, Madam Chair. No, that was just my question. I was unclear of what was meant by that, so I just wanted clarification, because I can really, trying to put myself in the shoes of these residents, you have all of this happen, and leaving this massive, visible impact on the neighbors and the environment. I mean, it's, it can be very alarming and jarring, and I acknowledge that, and I appreciate the steps to try to rectify it. I just wanted to make sure that it's going to be back, restored, back to its original state, eventually, after the process moves forward.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? And so, I'm with some of my colleagues who are a little concerned about how this all started, and have some, you know, reservations, and... Yes, I will get to you and just mount it. Thank you. And so, I also don't want there to be mudslides either, and I'm worried that... I feel like this board, and the BOA as well, were put in a really difficult position. We were given something that someone had already disturbed a lot of land, and if we don't do something, require something of this applicant, and now we're kind of being pushed into an SUP because of how I see it as bad behavior. If we don't do that, I'm worried about other impacts to this community. The other concern that you brought to me, Ms. Wyke, when you were addressing that question, was if there was a recreation, we understand that this is a family use, according to the applicant, but if there was a recreation use and bringing folks on, like, how do we ensure we protect the community as well? Because it does seem a little strange, the request. And is there a condition? I'm trying to find, I'm looking at the conditions, and I didn't see anything that would really address that.
Courtney Wyke, for the record, essentially, it kind of would fall back to code enforcement. That would be illegally operating a business, if they were to be doing so.
So, there's not like a condition saying you can't do this, because that's just a code use?
Code is...
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. We do have mechanisms to enforce if that was to occur, just like any other use that was operating illegally for a commercial...
Thank you. And DA Edwards has signed in. I may have gotten myself in trouble with what I said.
No, you didn't.
Okay. I'm on guard.
Yeah. You can breathe. No, I wanted to speak on this question of liability, which has come up a couple times now. So, one of the commenters mentioned it, Commissioner Andrewola mentioned it, potential exposure for any problems that happen down the road. Well, I'm here for the board, obviously, and I'm going to outline kind of the way this works in these kind of cases. But, the county is generally not liable for what the Supreme Court has called mirror planning. If the county is just planning, or if the county's involved in the mirror planning, which this, what this is, right here, then, and something goes wrong with the project, the county's not liable for a taking in that situation. Flip side of that is if the county actually is building the improvements, and then something goes wrong, then the county is potentially responsible in that situation. So, you've got mirror planning on one side, you've got actual construction on the other side, and then you have sort of this gray area in the middle, which is called substantial involvement, that is more than mirror planning, but short of actual construction. And I apologize for the vagueness of it, but that's what the state of the law is in the Nevada Supreme Court. And the county's actually been in one of these cases in the last five years, five, six years. It was Fritz versus Washoe County, and it was a flooding case, where some flooding came down the hill from a subdivision the county had approved, did some flooding on a private parcel of land, and then the county was sued for a taking in that case. The county had to go to trial on that case, ultimately won in the trial, and then that was upheld by the Nevada Supreme Court. But, as long as the county's only doing mirror planning, then it is not a liability for the county. If the county is, starts getting involved in the actual design of the project, then it is in that middle realm where it could potentially end up causing some liability. So, as a general matter, I'm just going to state this, because Commissioner Andrewola mentioned there's exposure, potential exposure for the county, those would be the parameters that would come into play. But, as a general matter, the county would not be assuming liability or something like that for approving a project, a special use permit, a subdivision, any of those types of things. And for obvious reasons, you can see, if that were the state of affairs, then, you know, local governments would go out of business, right? Because they would be on the hook for the results of developments, private developments that happen out in the community, and that would not be tenable. And as a result, that's the breakdown that the courts have come up with to decide where the lines are. So, I just want to be clear, the county's not assuming some kind of liability here today by acting on this, if it does decide to approve it.
Thank you. And I think you bring up something in my mind, before I went back to Commissioner Clark, of, so, this, heaven forbid, something happens in association with this use, if this commission moves forward on an SUP. And, that's where private property owners can use the court system in this country. And, that's where we are in an interesting situation of giving a lot of property rights, but a lot of liability to individual property owners for using those property rights. And I'm seeing some nodding. So, okay, just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. And Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't mean to interrupt you earlier, I just want to make sure you know I wanted to make a couple of comments.
I always come back.
You know, at first sight of this, I thought, well, we're going to be able to fix some grading that wasn't documented initially, and move on with this. And when I started hearing from the neighbors, it made me think, I live out in that area, and I've got Jumbo Grade right down the street from me. If we had a situation similar to what we had, a rain cell that we had in Hidden Valley, and that happened, I mean, nobody can control where that happens. If we've got a, you can call it a dam, you can call it a pond, anything that holds water back, the hydraulic pressure of water is just tremendous. And, if you're downstream from that, you know, I can understand the concern of the folks. Is there any kind of a spillway, or runoff, or a way to, if it overflows? Is there a way to channel this some way away from their property? Is there a way to make sure that, when I look at this picture showing this washout, I mean, this is what it looks like when you take your quad and go up Jumbo Grade after a heavy winter. What used to be a road is now a culvert. So, I'm just wondering, you know, we've got no control over this. I mean, we have an atmospheric river coming our way sometime in the next day or two. You know, if it's dammed up, ponded up, held behind some type of a barrier, and it breaches that barrier, it could, you know, seem like a tsunami to folks that are down creek from that. So, what kind of, and I'm not a hydrologist, but, you know, I've got 1,000 linear foot of ditch around my house. I built my house up four foot above the property, the height of the property, just for that one day that we might have, you know, wash out. And to the point now, the folks that are living downstream from this don't have the ability to do that. Their house is already constructed. What can we do to make sure, if we have a rain cell in this area, and it breaches the barriers of this pond, what's it going to do to the folks downstream from this? And I'm just asking these questions, because I'm not a hydrologist, I don't know how it's going to be planned out, but what can, what can we do to prevent, you know, a small-scale tsunami from going in these people's property, if we get a rain cell that reaches the perimeter of this pond? Thank you.
Through the chair to the commissioner, Commissioner, of course, the designs have not been performed yet, but to maybe help alleviate some of your concern and answer your question, part of the engineering conditions require that the owner provide plans that include these following elements: an emergency spillway in the dam, again, an embankment, or a low-level outlet to drain the pond in case of emergency. This has to be a lined facility. There has to be adequate freeboard that's accounted for, to make sure that the wind action, even though it's a very small surface area, that the wind action doesn't create waves that would then cause erosion and cause potential failures. So, there's a series of more requirements, trash racks, where the pipelines are located, those types of things. The other comment that I would just quickly make, and I believe Planner Wyke is pulling that up, is to show that the embankment and the pond are not in the natural drainage. They are aside and separate from. And I appreciate your comment, because in July of last year, on that Sunday afternoon, when that large thunder cell set over the top of Hidden Valley, you know, that created a situation that was very damaging for many residents below. I only mention this because that very well could occur. I've come before you in the last couple of weeks to talk about FEMA flood map updates, and one of those comments that I continually make is that flooding can occur anywhere. As a matter of fact, 30% of all the flood claims that FEMA receives on an annual basis are for areas outside of high-hazard zones. So, I want to reiterate, thank you for opening the door for me to make that comment, that flooding can occur anywhere. But, the, I just wanted to give you that little bit of additional assurance, we've included those types of design requirements, and we'll be looking for those in any design that moves forward and comes to Washoe County Engineering. And then I just wanted to follow up with that additional comment, that the design that they've identified, the location, is not associated with the natural drainage.
Sure. Thank you for that. And, again, we have to weigh the benefits here. Somebody's got a hobby pond versus somebody's home, which one do we want to protect? And that's the direction I'm going, and engineering is what engineering is. But, again, we have a storm cell over a certain area, anything can happen. So, again, trying to protect the folks that are actually living there, versus somebody's going to go out and go fishing there once in a while. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional comments from the board? Not seeing any. So, hey, do y'all want to put your comments in the microphone? All right. How about we, if we have no additional questions, no additional comments, I think that it's about time for a motion. So, do commissioners have a motion here? And, if not, I am happy to try one. I feel for the residents, I do. I feel like the county's in a tough situation. If we don't, in my opinion, if we don't approve this SUP, we put the community in a bigger risk. But, I understand it's a very bizarre, complicated issue, and I apologize. But, I am going to disagree with the Board of Adjustment denial. I'm going to move to reverse the decision of the Board of Adjustment denial, and approve the WSUP 24-0015, based on the availability to make the special use permit findings required by Washoe County Commission section, as outlined in the staff report. And, add the conditions of approval as stated.
Subject to.
Subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you. All right. That is the motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the board on that motion? Say none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. And I'm so sorry for the wait that we had to get to that public hearing. We will now move into item 17. Manager Brown.
Item 17 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Unused time may not be allocated to other speakers. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole, and virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available.
Thank you, Manager Brown. Madam Clerk.
There is. Nobody signed in.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we will close item 17. We'll now move into item 18. Manager Brown.
Item 18 is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas.
Thank you. Do you have anything for us, Manager Brown?
I would only close, Madam Chair. Reminder, we will not meet next week on the 18th. We will meet on the 21st, no, 25th.
25th.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That will be a very full agenda, and it will include a presentation by the newly anointed registrar of voters.
Okay.
With an update.
Thank you very much. That's exciting. With that, I'll move to the vice chair. Vice Chair Herman, any comments? Okay. And Commissioner Garcia, no. Commissioner Andrew Ola.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Oh, that's very nice. You too. And Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a request for information I asked earlier, and I'll put it back on the record yet again. On September 27th, the deputy registrar voters notified the Secretary of State that the voter registration list maintenance had not been completed within the timeframe required by law, which is contrary to what was reported to county management. Of approximately 48,205 addressed verification cards that were mailed in June 2024, approximately 28,954 voters who did not return the address verification cards were not designated as inactive by statutory deadline. Has that been corrected? That's my first request. And I want documentation if it has, not just telling me the word yes. That's not cutting it with me anymore. I want documentation and substantiation by anything that I ask, not just a verbal, it's been handled. There's nothing to see here. So I want, I'd like to have that be a request. I'd also like to see documentation showing that the reduction of homelessness has been reduced by 40%. Again, documentation, not just somebody saying it has. And lastly, I'd still like to know if the interim registrar voters is on the county payroll. I don't think that would affect any lawsuits, any HR issues. It's a, it's a simple question. Are we paying somebody? It has nothing to do with what may transpire with court cases or HR issues. Either we are or we aren't, and I'd like to know that. Thank you.
With that, thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. We are adjourned at 4:47.